One of them called me already. I just spoke with one of them. That ain't gonna work. Talking to myself right now.
I'm fine. How are you, Liam? I know. I can't wait till Friday.
Let me see what this is. Probably something to do with... Annual report.
What was different in the agenda? It's kind of late to send out a revised agenda. You know, I mean...
Well, the thing is, we're not gonna talk about it. I bring it up in our next meeting because basically you don't have a chance to read it.
No.
And like last week, same thing.
What, all the additions? You and me both. I'm tired of all the additions. We've been doing it every week.
So I bring it up.
All right.
Yeah.
You know, I've got a lot of notes.
Hi, how you doing, Sam? All of the transcripts from just this morning.
Yeah. What do I do? Oh, let's see. Well, if we look at the agenda, it's gonna be short. The whole bunch of stuff that was added today, don't hear yet. I thought this was revised one. Is this not the revised one?
I think it's gonna be short, though.
Well, uh, Pining does not have... Pining always has a recommendation, kind of jurisdiction. Even though Pining did pay and burned details for reasons, it still has to have a decision. And we're the only ones that can make the decision. Actually, we prepared this point to make the decision because we got late information this morning. I would, um, I wouldn't be opposed to putting it off another...
All right.
If somebody were to, you know, bring it up.
Uh, does any...
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This meeting of your Pontiac City Council is hereby called to order. We will begin with the opening question for council members. What is a character trait of the residents of Pontiac that inspires you and motivates you as a Pontiac City Council member? Councilwoman Rutherford, first up.
Good evening. I would have to say it's the grit of the people in Pontiac. They are fighters and believe in what they believe in. And at the end of the day, they're gonna fight for what's best for themselves, their family, and especially Pontiac. So it's the grit for me.
Councilman Nicholson.
I would say it's the teamwork. You know, in District 2, if somebody puts out that they need something, there's five or 10 people in line looking to find that thing that they need or give them, you know, hope or strength or support in whatever they can.
Councilman Goodman.
I have to go with what Councilwoman Rutherford said, which is like the grit or resiliency, but also the desire for change. Like, I don't think there's many other cities that would have elected a whole new council of people with different identities and different backgrounds, different thoughts, the same way that Pontiac would have. So I'd say that's really what it is.
Councilman Parker.
I would say they're resilient no matter what trial or tribulation. They just keep on pressing their way and pressing forward and always seeking the brighter path and the effort and energies that they commit to being able to do that, which will improve the communities in the city.
Councilwoman James.
Yes, I would say the one trait is the friendliness of the people. Not being really a Pontiac resident, though I've been here for many, many years. Not a resident, but not one born and raised in Pontiac. I would say that I've made very, very close friends in this city. And I love the fact that this is a very warm and friendly city.
Pro Tem Carrington.
Thank you, President McGinnis. One characteristic trait that the residents of the city of Pontiac have, which inspires me as a council member, is one of resilience. And you really think about our, the last 12 to 15 years, is that this city has been through so much, but have remained resilient when facing these difficulties the last couple of decades. So resilience.
Mayor Grimaldi, are you itching to try and get in on this?
Well, there's a lot that could be said here because there are a lot of really amazing, I think, really heartwarming traits about our residents. But the one, and obviously a lot of those sentiments have already been shared. But the one thing that really stands out to me is Pontiac residents have a heart for the underdog.
Yep.
And oftentimes, we ourselves here in Pontiac have been the underdog, but Pontiac residents have a heart for others, whether they're here in the city or elsewhere in the state or country or around the world, who are the underdog. And that, to me, is a really admirable trait, to care about those who are the least among us.
Deputy Mayor Stevens.
Thank you. I don't know if the word is cosmopolitan, education, culture, but whatever the tying force is between those three words, it was a Pontiac resident who took me to the DIA every year and told me all the stories about the Greek and Roman statues. It was a Pontiac resident who introduced me to the French language. It was a Pontiac resident who introduced me to all sorts of international cuisines and cooking. And so whatever that thread is, that is what excites me about Pontiac residents.
All right. And my word was also co-opted by Councilwoman James. Friendly. We have a very friendly population here in our city. And it's hard to think of that in a city council setting. It's very serious and very, you know, deliberative. But if you think about, if you were just out in the community at an event, at a function, just shopping, I mean, you're interacting with a lot of people that are inherently friendly and willing to make a new friend out of a stranger. And I think that's especially true in Pontiac. And that's a characteristic that inspires me through this service in the council, that we are working for all 61,000 of our friendly, resilient, gritty neighbors, teamwork-y neighbors. With that, we are now at the invocation. Councilman Parker.
Thank you, sir. For those who may not know, let me introduce you to the esteemed Pastor Emeritus Kathy Desrow of the Boulevard Church. She will be giving us our invocation today.
Could everyone please stand for prayer? And bow your heads if that is your preference. Our precious Heavenly Father, we ask tonight that you be with each person who is here and each family who is represented. Fill them with love, with kindness, with consideration, and with courtesy. Fill the council with wisdom, character, and knowledge that comes from you to better this city and make it something that honors you and the people who live in it. For we ask it in the name of our Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now I'll read the names. You can follow along on the screen as well. Of those that we know in recent days we've lost in our community. Kenneth Arnold, a World War II veteran and GM tool and die maker for 45 years. Bill Auqueer, worked at GM for 30 years, sometimes portrayed Santa Claus. His wife died earlier this year, Bonnie Bain Auqueer, a Pontiac native, and she was eight years his senior. Donald Brown, 91. He previously was an attendant at the Pontiac State Hospital and Clinton Valley Center. Kia Daniels, just 37 years old. Carl Donato Jr., his family owned Donato Markets in Pontiac. He worked for GM and was active in UAW Local 653. Leona Myers, maiden name Fisher. She was a nurse for decades at St. Joseph Mercy Hospital here in Pontiac. Janice Gallardo, lived to be 83 years young. Bob Hutchins, a US Army veteran, worked 30 years at GM Truck and Bus. Bob Keglevitz, retired from Oakland Press Newspaper here in Pontiac. Larry Louis Lefler, just 36 years old. He's the gentleman who lost his life and was stabbed to death on West Huron in recent days. Ruth Hurley, maiden name McCoy. She was a Michigan Secretary of State worker here in Pontiac. Dubre Newman, past Pontiac School Board trustee, who will be subject of a council resolution this evening. Esther Pence, age 93. She lived on Clover Lawn in District 3 and sold Avon products for over five decades. Richard Peru, Korean War veteran in the Navy, GM for 37 years. John Sawyers, GM retiree. He was an engineer with the Pontiac Motor Division. Reverend John Stevenson, Senior, Assistant Pastor at New Bethel Missionary Baptist Church under the late, great Reverend Amos G. Johnson. Anna Thompson, 87 years old. She lived on Harrison Street in District 1. And Vera Free, maiden name Wilson. She was 99 and also a retiree from GM. We lift their names up and those in your families and neighborhoods that you know that have departed from us in recent days. A moment of silence, please. Thank you. You may be seated. Roll call Clerk Doyle.
Carrington.
Present.
Goodman.
Present.
James.
Here.
McGinnis.
Present.
Nicholson.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Rutherford.
Present.
Mr. President, you have a quorum.
Quorum being established. All members present and accounted for. Is there a motion to approve this evening's agenda?
So moved.
It has been moved by Councilman Parker, seconded by Councilman Goodman, to approve this evening's meeting agenda. That motion is now before us. Councilman Goodman, you shared with me that you would like to bring a motion to amend.
Yes. Yep. I would like to move item number 12 up to item number two, and then everything down subsequently by one.
All right. So Councilman Goodman is moving to amend to bring the resolution to approve the appointment of Parks and Recreation Director and make that the first agenda item after agenda address. And all other items, which is the current two on down, would move down accordingly. Is there a second?
A second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. Any debate? On that amendment?
No, I just want to make a note.
Hearing no further debate on the motion to amend, roll call and adoption of the amendment to the agenda. Clerk Doyle.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
Seven yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. Councilwoman Rutherford, you have an amendment to the agenda.
Oh, no, I don't. You corrected. Thank you.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Any further discussion or amendments, clarifications? Hearing no further discussion, speakers list exhausted. We move now on adoption of the agenda as amended. Roll call Clerk Doyle.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Seven yeas, no nays.
The motion carries. The agenda is approved. Is there a motion to adopt this evening's consent agenda?
So moved.
Support. It's been moved by Councilman Parker, seconded by Councilwoman Rutherford. It's not a debatable motion, and this week it's one set of our meeting minutes for last week's regular meeting. Roll call on adoption of the consent agenda. Clerk Doyle.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Seven yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. Consent agenda adopted. We are now at special presentation. We're joined by a special guest this evening. Councilwoman Rutherford facilitated this presentation, so I want to give the floor to her to introduce this evening's presentation.
Thank you so much. Good evening, everyone. I think it's always a great opportunity when you see a business owned, especially by African-American women, doing something in the community to actually enhance and improve this community. This lovely young lady was here last week, and she was afraid to speak. And I said, you know what, this week we're gonna give you the floor to talk about what you're trying to do to actually give out jobs and opportunities. She's a registered RN, and I want to, without further ado, introduce to them some and reintroduce to others, Ms. Arielle Dockley. Can we give her a hand, please?
Feel free to approach the podium, and you have the floor. Yep.
Hi, how are you all?
Good.
Thank you for allowing me to speak today. My name is Arielle Dockley, and I'm the owner of Prosperous Healthcare Training. So at Prosperous Healthcare Training, our mission of our program is to develop skillful, critical thinking and caring nurse assistants who will function within the roles and responsibilities as required by the state of Michigan. Our nurse assistant program is designed to prepare qualified individuals to become safe and effective nursing assistants. Graduates of the program will be prepared to take the program's competency evaluation skills exam and the required test for state certification. So our goal is to teach students how to provide great quality healthcare. We also want to teach students bedside mannerism and professionalism. So the program that we have is a day class for two weeks from 7:00 AM to 3:30 PM. We also offer evening class, which is three weeks, from 5:00 to 9:30 PM. We also offer virtual as well for the students who aren't able to make the day class and evening class, but they must attend in person for lab and clinical. Also, the cost of the tuition will be $1,250. Included in the tuition costs is the students' books, their uniforms, and their lunch. Prosperous Healthcare Training and goals for students are, we're gonna create great job placements for the students, make sure students are professional, successful, and they will excel and continue to grow throughout their journey of healthcare field. Prosperous Healthcare will always inspire and motivate seniors to become the best that they'll possibly be able to become. Yep. So, any questions?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, thank you. First of all, thank you again for coming this evening. So my question is...
And I am so nervous.
That's okay.
I can tell. I am shaking up here.
You did a good job.
I'm sorry. I flew by so fast.
You did a good job.
I'm so nervous.
Um, so my question is, if someone was interested in getting in the program, what would be the first step for them to do so?
They can contact me myself, or I also have a partner. Or they can go to our website, which is www.prospershealthcaretraining.com. We also have Facebook. We also have Instagram. So if they contact me, call me, we can set them up an open house, and we'll take a tour around the school. And that's how they can enroll as well.
And my follow-up question, just so that everyone is clear, where exactly is your location?
It's on Woodward. It's five minutes from here. It's located on Woodward between Square Lake and South Boulevard.
And the address?
The address is 43700 Woodward, Suite 108.
Thank you so much.
Mm-hmm.
Pro Tem Carrington, you have the floor.
Thank you, President McGinnis. It sounds like a great program. You mentioned clinicals. Is clinicals done within that two or three-week period? Or is...
Yes, it's done within a two- to three-week period. Yes. So first, go ahead. I'm sorry.
And are you connected to the hospital that's directly in that area?
No, we're not connected to that hospital. We're with nursing homes. They're by the name of Sienna. They're, they own over 40 nursing homes in the area. So we get to pick which one exactly the students will have their clinicals at.
Okay. Thank you.
Further discussion on this special presentation. You want to tell us a little about yourself and your background?
Yes. My name is Arielle Dockley. I am a nurse. I started off as a certified nursing assistant myself. So back then, when I went to school as a certified nursing assistant, I always knew I wanted to own and open up my very own school. So, you know, at the time, once I went to nursing school, I was trying to open up my very own school, and it didn't happen. But God's timing, it happened this year for me. So I just recently came back from a travel nurse assignment. Throughout the pandemic, I've been traveling as a travel nurse doing COVID vaccines and testing, testing for, you know, COVID. And when I came back, I had a great opportunity and invested my funds into opening up my very own school. Yes.
Thank you very much for being with us this evening. Any final questions? Councilwoman James, you have the floor.
I just wanted to ask, so this will be your very first class?
Yes.
The people that you are recruiting now will be your first class?
Yes.
Okay.
So our first class is October 17. And also, we teach women how to open up their very own CNA school as well. We offer that course as well.
Okay.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rutherford.
Just to close, I am so, again, thank you for coming. Thank you for showing them what Black excellence looked like. And again, I look forward to seeing you in our community. And once again, you go, girl.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for being with us this evening. We'll give you a warm Pontiac round of applause.
Okay, thank you.
The city council has electronic versions of her flyer, which we will circulate throughout the community and include in our Council of Communications for future weeks as well, so everyone can reference that information. We are now at recognition of elected officials. Are there any current elected officials in our community that would like to have the floor this evening? With that, we are now at agenda address. Pro Tem Carrington.
Thank you, President McGinnis. Dr. Deidra Waterman. Item number six on the agenda.
Good evening. I'll start with item number seven, as a matter of fact, and speak to six as well. You are counsel doing some housekeeping for the Woodward Loop reconfiguration process, which I thank you for doing. This could be transformational for the city of Pontiac as a catalyst to revive the downtown as well as connect the neighborhoods to the downtown. This is something that I signed the letter for so the new director of M.D., Paul Ajiba, could go ahead and get it on his agenda. You know, they have to plan these five years in advance. So because I was able to get some support for that, I was trying to get the council to sign off on it, too. That council didn't do it, so I'm glad that you're doing it. But Mr. Ajiba says, I've gotta get it on my budget. So if you would go ahead and sign it, Mayor Waterman, we'll take you at your word, and we'll go ahead and put it on the budget. So I did that. I did get some other support and letters from our downtown businesses and GPCC and other organizations. But I thank you for doing that, coming full round so it shows that executive office and the council are backing this very transformative process for the city of Pontiac. So we look forward to that. But also, I heard the discussion about the cement plant that you are reconsidering, that the Planning Commission turned down for rezoning, that you're considering, and I want to support that as well. I think the fact that they are going to donate 65 acres of parkland to the city of Pontiac to get us out of that deficit is tremendous. And that will enable us to get a lot of grants for our other parks, which is very much needed in the city of Pontiac. It also offers the fact that we can have that partnership with United Hostel Mortgage, who has partnered with us on other things. They were only company that we gave them an abatement, a tax break, and they gave it back to us because they thought Pontiac wanted to develop, and they wanted to help us. So they've done some other things with us, and they're willing to work with that project. And I certainly commend you, support that.
Thank you. Pastor Veronica Taylor, what item on the agenda?
First, honor God who's the head of my life. Secondly, I would like to thank this councilman, Brett Nicholson, for being a true person to me. He took me where I wanted to go and see the Crown Building that they are bringing here to city, to this city. Now, the Crown Building for the cement is so beautiful in the inside as well as on the outside. You cannot see any cement being mixed, no smoke coming from nowhere. You can see it going into the truck where it's not making no noise, soundproof and everything. And when they wash the trucks off from the cement, you do not see no dust going onto, into the air nowhere. You can see the vent taking it back up and recycling through. Now, if you concern about things in this community that people are bringing to this city, there's never a problem of getting firsthand look at anything in this community. All you have to do is ask someone, and they will take you where you need to go about what's coming in the city of Pontiac. And I love that building because not only will it help the community, it will help inmates, the hard-working moms service that I help bring home. And I'm looking forward to just it doing just that because the people that's coming home from prison be able to have a job and well-educated into the program. So I thank you all, and I hope y'all vote for this.
Thank you. Ms. Batrice Waterman, items two and seven.
Good evening, members of council, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Clerk Doles, and Attorney Sharp. I'm gonna be brief. As it relates to item number two, I see that this is a second reading. I'm going to ask that you adopt it. And the reason why I'm asking for the adoption, this amendment is required by the IRS in order for the retirement system to maintain their tax-qualified status. That is the most important thing that should be for you all to hear today. That's why that ordinance needs to be adopted. Item number seven, I think it's great, but my question in regards... Item number seven, I think it's great, but my question in regards to item number seven is how, where is the cost from the city? What, how much is the city going to have to pay into this happening? And where will those funds come from? Thank you, and have a good evening.
Uh, thank you. Ms. Renee Beckley, what item on the agenda?
Talk about item number six. I'm kind of skeptical about this because if this is the United Shore Mortgage Company, my thought is, why would somebody like a banking institution, a mortgage company want to submit or a construction site near them, and their employees or their clients looking out at that? That, does that sound suspect to you? Number two, one hour after I left here, WJBK, Channel 2, Fox 2, had a story on the same company doing a land grab in the neighborhood, trying to make a 90-year-old woman move because they want to move in the neighborhood. Now, are they going to go over there in District 7 and start doing that too, start taking up everything? They want Murphy Park, you going to give them to them? So, I, I be, I will research this more, I mean, because you seem like this is rushed through or, I mean, this is the first time I heard about this last week. So, don't be so excited about projects, take your time on projects, study, research, who the people are, what, what is their agenda, what's their motive, what's the hidden agenda? Because I think there is something with that mortgage company and this company, is something going on there. I don't know who's all in the mix, I don't know if somebody up here is in on it, but it, this doesn't, this smelt of high heaven to me. So, I mean, I, I wouldn't go through it lickety-split like the way you're doing this, too fast, too fast. Research this, I, I suggest you delay this about to Thanksgiving, that's what I would do until I get all the information, who's who, what's what, what, what are you really doing? Because I don't see, I can't work in the office and look at somebody mixing cement, and I'm trying to add up somebody's mortgage or doing somebody's banking, and the cement company right there, I mean, that's the first thing I think. The second thing is that story that was on Fox 2.
Uh, thank you. Ms. Chris, Christina Bear, what item on the agenda?
Um, I'm sitting here, I'm not sure if it's on the agenda, I'm just telling us about where the proposal is, is that okay?
Okay, no, I'll remove you to public comment. Mr. Chuck Johnson, item 19.
Thank you very much, Chuck Johnson here. Item 19 is a, uh, Clinton River, uh, uh, project and a ribbon, ribbon-cutting ceremony. And I've advocated, uh, at this podium numerous times regarding a lady that was really a promising individual, uh, Mrs. Ferguson, uh, she was a pioneer in this town. She was a mother in this council room when she came here, she was a very proud lady. And if this resolution or this ribbon-cutting ceremony happens, I'm hopeful that whoever presents it make mention of her name in some capacity and/or put in some kind of a, uh, statue or document with her picture on it or whatever, but give her 110% recognition, uh, as it relates to this, uh, Clinton River Trail. She was a very, very adamant person as it related to that. I want to go back, uh, to number six just for a few seconds. We're going to hear a lot of, uh, innuendos and, uh, really unnecessary comments regarding, uh, this project, but I know how these projects operate. I've been in the kind of business for years and years and years, and I know where this is located at. So I'm hopeful that this council will certainly look forward to giving this, uh, Crown, uh, company, uh, all the, uh, opportunities and, uh, votes that's necessary to, uh, to get this approved in tonight's meeting. And, uh, I'm sure that United Shore has already mentioned their concern, which is really null and void to a certain degree, they, they, uh, go along with the plan. So there's no hidden agendas that I would, uh, submit myself. So thank you very much for your time.
Uh, thank you, sir. Ms. Darlene Clark, item, agenda item?
Hello, I'm speaking as a resident of the city of Pontiac. Um, six and seven, as far as the Crown Enterprise, as far as the two-way traffic going around Y-Track, I, I don't know if you guys, the council and the administration is missing the point at what the people are trying to say. The people is all for progress. Progress is long overdue in the city of Pontiac in each district from one to seven. But the problem is, when you bring these businesses within the district, uh, reach, you're pushing and monopolizing the people out. You're not upgrading the people, you low-grading them to make room for these businesses, who we don't even know is paying taxes or giving anything back to the people. The people living condition is not that of the business that's coming in, it's overpowering them. Their money is pushing the small man out. The ratings in Pontiac is not very good. International Congress, uh, I mean, uh, council, Carrington City International, we're not on that list. But it's not about intellect, international, it's about local. If you have that two-way going around Y-Track with the same material and the same equipment that you have today, you're not upgrading the city of Pontiac. You're leaving it at a standstill for the business to just to drive through and get to, to their point of view, or you're not looking at the west, the residents. You're not taking into consideration the, the, that burden that they had, the residents that live here has to carry. It's a big burden. Whether you know that, can accept that, I don't know, but it is a big burden from a person who's been living here all her life, and who know people who helped build the city of Pontiac, not just Mr. Chuck Johnson. Mr. Chuck Johnson is just a small portion of the big people who built the city of Pontiac. So take consideration that pushing the people out is what these businesses are doing.
Uh, thank you. Mr. Stanley Harris, what agenda item?
Giving honor to God, who is the head of my life. Uh, thank you, Mr. President, Mayor Grimal, mighty Melanie Rufford, my councilperson. I rise in support of agenda item number six, and that is, uh, for the city of Pontiac to gain acquisition to 65 acres of wasted parkland that we are in a deficit. We can get federal grants, money coming into the city to do projects, and I urge the council with prayer and contemplation to really support this item, number six, because I'm a lifelong member of the city of Pontiac, lived here all my life, and only few opportunities have came along where we can actually do something positive something for the city. I thank you very much for your time.
Uh, thank you, sir. Ms. Gloria Miller, what item, agenda item?
Good evening, everyone. Uh, item number six, I, well, briefly, I'm going to speak about number seven, uh, I had the opportunity to go last week to the, uh, Town Hall for the Loop. It's a good thing, but I, I, being on the council, this is one thing I learned with businesses when they come in, they do lie to us. Because, reason I said that, we put Amazon in my district, and Amazon won't, won't pave a street, and they loaded. I couldn't get, I, when I was in office, I couldn't even get them to pave a street. And that's what these businesses do, they come in, they do all this thing, I could name the one on Martin Luther King right across from where you're talking about, where you want to put this cement truck at, for, for your year, so we went at them for a long time, they promised they were going to hire all these people, they did not. I could go on with several other businesses, and they don't do what they say. So I, I, I speak this because I don't want citizens of Pontiac to be fooled. First of all, I want to go back to the, uh, cement. When I heard about it last week, I didn't know much about it, so I did a little research, and Crown Enterprises, did you know that they was on a docket list for tall grass and weed? Just this year, all these fines. I'm looking at them as, as we speak, tall grass and fines. All I'm saying is, be careful who you bring into your city, because there are fake businesses. Then I read about Crown, uh, uh, Crown Enterprises here, and I'll read a little something here, they got, uh, the billionaire family, which is the Maroon, demanded 40, $43.5 million in cash along with 261 properties, of which nine sat in the bridge footp- footprint. The paper noted that the Maroons appeared to have quietly taken over the nine parcels long before the deal and had used them without paying taxes. Now, this is what we talking about bringing here. I want to get this in fa- real fast. They also stated here that they are the third highest, making cement also emits a lot of dangerous air pollution that's linked to a array of health concerns. The cement industry is the third largest source of industrial air pollution, sulfur, nitrogen, and carbon dioxide that you're bringing into your neighborhood.
Uh, thank you. That concludes our agenda address, while President McGinnis.
All right, agenda address concluded. Uh, we move now to the first amended item of business. Uh, Mayor Tim Grimal has nominated a candidate for the new position of Parks and Recreation Director, and, uh, want to give the floor to Mayor Grimal to, uh, queue up that introduction, and the candidate is joining us, uh, remotely from many time zones away, and so that's why, thank you, Councilman Goodman, for ensuring that that could be handled earlier on to ensure technological connection. Mayor Grimal, you have the floor?
Thank you, President McGinnis. Uh, this is, um, our recommendation to fill the position of the Director of the Parks and Recreation Department. Uh, as I think the community is aware, uh, we have not had a Parks and Recreation Department in 15-plus years now, and, uh, as a result, our parks have been neglected, uh, our, uh, senior centers are not where they should be in terms of being updated and being of high quality, uh, and our youth recreation, uh, division, although it's now under really strong leadership under Youth Recreation Manager Tanisha Taylor, uh, it had not been where it really needs to be either. And, uh, we, as part of this new fiscal year that started July 1st, reconstituted the Parks and Recreation Department, something that we're very, very excited about. Uh, that department will, uh, be, uh, in charge of three different divisions, one being youth recreation, another being the senior centers, and the third being our parks division. Uh, we obviously have a lot of work to do ahead, including with youth recreation and enrichment and senior centers, but especially when it comes to improving our parks. Uh, that is an area where we have tremendous potential because our park land is truly amazing and beautiful, but it obviously has not been well-maintained, it's been neglected, and has not been invested in, uh, really for decades now. Uh, and so this is an area that needs to be a very, very high priority. Uh, we interviewed, uh, four individuals for this position, uh, we liked all four of the individuals, uh, but, uh, only one individual, the individual that we're recommending, had experience in all areas that will fall under the Parks and Recreation Department, those being youth recreation, senior recreational programming and facilities management, and parks. Uh, and, uh, in particular, he was the only applicant who had extensive experience in parks. And given the amount of neglect and how long that neglect has gone on, we really didn't think that we, uh, could afford to bring on somebody who would be learning on the job, because we have a lot of catching up to do when it comes to investing in our parks and better maintaining our parks, uh, and that's why we thought that it was appropriate for us to go with the one candidate who, uh, by far had the most experience in, in really all areas, but especially when it comes to parks management. Uh, and, uh, that is, uh, Vince McCully, and I may be butchering your name, Vince, so I'll allow you, when you introduce yourself, to, uh, say it, uh, again, but, um, you know, I, I know that Deputy Mayor Stevens was involved in the interviews as well, and so before we turn it over to Vince, I'd like to give Deputy Mayor Stevens an opportunity to, uh, share his thoughts and impressions as well.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I think the candidate's resume speaks for itself, um, he has a wealth of experience. He is joining us, uh, as the mayor said, and as you can see, remotely, and we were just very blown away by the, the level of experience that he had, but also his thoughtfulness and his approach to recreation and making sure that it was not, um, just segregated to only seniors can do this, only youth can do this, only someone in between can do these things, but to say that, you know, even though we have them segregated by income streams, at the end of the day, he really believes in bringing together, um, opportunities so that you see more family events, so you will see seniors, um, youth, and everyone in between out enjoying themselves. And so, again, we just thought that he was the candidate that best tied together the entirety of the department.
All right, so it sounds like, uh, now would be a good time to hear from the candidate, uh, if you can introduce yourself, um, as best as the technological barriers will provide, and then we will have, uh, questions and deliberations from council members, and, uh, we'll proceed accordingly. So, um, if you could, sir, first provide the exact pronunciation of your name.
Yes, uh, hello, uh, everyone, and, uh, good evening, thanks for the invite for the meeting. My name is Vince McCullough, and, um, I'm excited, uh, to hear all that's going on, and excited that I, with my experience and background, uh, that I'll be able to, uh, share with the city of Pontiac, uh, all that I know. I, I, I was born and raised in Michigan, uh, thus the, uh, the Lions tie that I'm wearing, I don't know if you guys can see that. I think there are a lot of things that are happening in Michigan with trail systems and parks, and I know, uh, the city of Pontiac is on the verge of doing some great things, uh, with that, and I'm looking forward to, uh, to all that happening, uh, and bringing that, that knowledge and experience to Pontiac.
Very good. Uh, for the community's benefit, um, council has been provided this information, uh, but the nominee from the mayor's office holds, um, an AA degree in Business Administration and Marketing, a BA in Recreation Facility Management from Central Michigan, and an MA in Parks and Recreation Administration from Central Michigan University. Um, for the last five years, uh, has been a park manager for the State of Arizona Parks and Trails, uh, with Oracle State Park, Environment Center, and Wildlife Refuge. Uh, from 2011 to present, owner and consultant of recreation venues. From, uh, 2014 to 17, Facility Director and Recreation and Event Camp Center for the State of Arizona Department of Health Services. Uh, and then, uh, experience that, that spans the decades beyond that, um, primarily in Arizona, but did have a, a six-year career, also in the 1990s as a park ranger with the State of Michigan Department of Natural Resources, uh, with a 365-acre park there, uh, and is a member of the National Recreation and Park Association. So just want to make sure you had, uh, that information that we have as well. Um, speaker's list has started, I had Councilwoman James and then Councilwoman Rutherford as Chair of the Parks Recreation and Public Works Subcommittee. Councilwoman James wanted to give you the floor.
Okay, well, first of all, I want to, uh, greet, uh, our candidate on today, and we are very, and very impressed with your background in Parks and Rec, because we know that we need, well, we've got a very challenging job for you, let me put it that way. It's very challenging, but I think that, you know, I'm hopeful that you are the man for the job, and we are looking for somebody with your experience, with your expertise, to help us to be able to shape our parks and make them the most premier parks in the state. And I think you can, you can help us to do that, because you certainly have the background and you have the experience. What you will find when you come to Pontiac is people who are very passionate about the parks and the green spaces, people who are very passionate about the potential to be able to link our parks with the various trail systems, uh, to be able to connect neighborhoods within the city of Pontiac. We're very excited about all of the potential that's available to us. We're very excited about all of the potential that's available to us and really excited about the possibility of having someone as Director of Parks and Rec that can lead that, that charge. So I hope we are, we are not putting too much of a burden on you, but we're asking, we are going to be asking a lot from you.
I totally understand, and I'm up for the challenge. The last 25 years in Parks and Recreation, I've been in management the whole time, and I've, you know, worked with multiple, multiple agencies in regards to trails, park developments, you know, and primarily it all started in Michigan. And as a young man, I ventured out into Arizona where things were happening very fast, population was growing very fast there, folks from all over the country were, were coming there. And so it was a great opportunity for me to be able to gain the knowledge at a very fast pace, able to work with multiple agencies in creating the funding, not just project itself, but the funding that would continue to be able to have a program involved with those parks and facilities. I do have a degree in Recreation Facility Management, from Central Michigan University by our chief. And I, you know, look forward to being able to work with a community that's ready to be able to get back in the Parks and Recreation process again, because once you've had it and then you don't have it, you know how much you've lost and how much you want it back. And so I'm, I'm excited about being able to provide that to the residents and folks in the city of Pontiac.
On follow-up, Councilman James.
I've got one other question, Mr. McCullough. Are you comfortable working in an urban environment, in a, in a very diverse city, in an urban city?
Yes, ma'am. You know, my, my family actually came from the Detroit area on Howard and Second Avenue over by the old Tiger Stadium back in the day. And so I, I'm very much in tune, you know, with, with every thing that a large city, a large metropolitan city is, is made up of, and the diversity of any community is what makes the community, it's, it's, to me, diversity makes a community vibrant and alive. And to be quite honest with you, without it, life would be very boring. And, you know, you can't have boring when it comes to Parks and Recreation. So I, I've been involved with the city of Phoenix, and at that time where, and it continues to this day, as well as the city of Tucson, many cultures, many people coming from all over the country into that, this state, and large Hispanic population, large Native American population. And the cult, the, the sharing of their cultures within the community is immense and really says volumes about the community and, and the Southwest. And so any community, large or small, having that, I, you know, I welcome, and I, I hope I can continue to be able to make progress in that field for the city of Pontiac.
Councilman Rutherford, you have the floor.
Yes, in your resume, you stated that you are Outreach Program Manager. How will you use your past experience in outreach in the urban setting to create diversity on your staff as well as, as Parks and Rec's department? Specifically, you answered about, you worked with, but what will you do using the skillset that you used when you were the Outreach Program Manager?
Yeah, I, I didn't get all that, and it rolled a couple a bit. I come up in the mountains here in Tucson, and the technology is in the greatest of this area. But I heard something about outreach and how it to be effective in that. I worked with--
And specifically, and specifically, sir, so you can--
Which is the--
Vince, Vince, to, Vince, can you hear me? Vince, to interject, the question, forgive me, Mr. President.
Go for it, Mayor Grimal.
To, the question was specific to using outreach to improve and enhance diversity, including on your staff.
Oh, definitely, okay. Yeah, and I was kind of going down that road anyways, but okay. Outreach would be in relation to attaining staff for the programs and the events, would be working with community leaders and churches and schools, colleges, as well as high schools for the, within the community, to be able to work within the programs, summer rec program, after-school rec program. And the outreach is basically some of the programs that I've done over the years, which received, you know, national recognition through Washington DC for funding, for grant funding, and working with multiple groups within the community, within five different, actually seven different school districts. So it's really networking with all of the entities within the community, not, you know, not having this tunnel vision. If you're going to be utilizing outreach as your process for gaining staff, for creating the programs, you're asking the questions to the public and as to what they need. And you have to be listening to the public as to what they need as it relates to diversity and how you can do that. Again, it's through outreach. Outreach of programming will accommodate all those things within the community, and you just have to know the right, you know, venues and entities to work with.
On follow-up, Councilman Rutherford.
Yes, you also stated that you required the grant writing, funding for projects for the facilities with the RICO and the LSD grant, LSTA grants. Can you break that down for me? How did you do that? And what was the point for point A? How did you start? What was the amount you went for? And did you, and what was the finishing results?
Sure, yeah. LSTA grants, Library Services Technology Act, also worked with RICO funding, which for park development, rails to trails, what have you, lots of different grants. The LSTA, as I was working with Mayor Culpeper County in their community services, I also worked with libraries. And we had a, we had a lot of book deals in the library. And so that, that in itself was, was brought out to the different neighborhoods, and then actually having staff that would be there within schools and the churches for different events and activities and having that, that vehicle there. And I actually received a LSTA grant for, to purchase a new vehicle, which was almost a quarter of a million dollars. So funding up to about $5 million. This was to access a program, summer recreation program, that I've worked with these different school districts within the Phoenix Metropolitan Area, and the Bill Gates Foundation was another. And it all had to do with the hot lunch program, and kids that were utilizing the hot lunch program to be able to accommodate those individuals with funding for different programs, after school or summer rec program, programs such as library, like computer tutor programs, reading immersion programs, as part of an acti, as part of activities for the after-school program and even the summer rec program. So this, this funding that came from Washington DC, obviously, for some reason, I, I got the, the folks actually come up from Washington DC and hand-delivered me the check for the funding of these programs, and had mentioned that the way that I networked with these, all the different entities within the community, that it was really reflecting the entire community, not just the school district, not just the city, not just, you know, specific neighborhoods, but, but everyone. And, and it empowered a lot of different groups. It was, it ran very deep. So as people that were affected positively from that grant, and they, they recognized it and knew that that was, that was a very good thing. And what's nice about it is those, those programs still exist to this day based on the work and, and time and effort I had put into it. And I, it was a, you know, a very time-consuming thing, but it was worth it because it's, it's, like I said, it's there to this day.
Thank you so much.
Councilman Nicholson. Councilman Nicholson is next on the speaker's list, followed by Pro Tem Carrington.
Good evening, sir. Thank you for spending some time with us.
Yes, definitely.
I first want to give kudos to the administration. We did a organization, a reorganization that put a lot of our management in roles where their expertise had to be varied, and they really hit the nail on the head. So kudos to you, and then kudos to you, Mr. McCullough, for existing. We have, you know, the, this mix of community ed, parks, land management, youth services, environmental quality and conservancy, all of those things are certainly found in various roles within your resume, but I'm wondering if you can highlight a particular role that maybe had the broadest amount or encompassed the most of, of those particular areas? And just tell us a little bit about how you functioned in that role and what it was like.
Okay. Well, again, I, you were breaking up a little bit, so I apologize for that. But I, I think the broad sector of, of my working with all these different sectors of Parks and Recreation, what I've found over the 25 years in doing what I've done, I've been kind of the road type to Parks and Recreation person. I could have worked in one place for 25 years and known just that, that particular place in regards to Parks and Recreation. I decided to go a different route. I decided to go and work with larger entities and kept challenging myself because I was able to get more knowledge and things that I'd be able to do. Now, mind you, every, not every program that I've done that is successful would work in the next, you know, in the next entity or next city. They're, they're not all universal. They have to be really set forth into the community's needs. Without taking the temperature, as I always call it, as to what the community needs, there is no way, you know, to be specific as to what you're going to provide. So in a broader sense, to wear the many hats as a Parks and Recreation Director, because, you know, quite frankly, with, with three different divisions, it, it takes on, you know, a lot of, takes on a lot of time and energy to be able to do that, but at the same time, it's, it's effective to those particular entities at a very, very high level, very, very high level. And, you know, even with staff, to be able to give them the opportunities of training, cross-training, not to be, you know, and not, again, not to have the tunnel vision type of thing, but to know many factors of the department and be trained in multiple areas is very effective for the department and, and saves the department funding. So I think that's, that's what I've learned and been a part of over the 25-plus years, is the fact that you have to be flexible, you have to roll with punches, you have to know what's the priority. And because, you know, as it was mentioned earlier, I, you know, there'll be a lot of things that's going to be, you know, drawn in my direction. And I, I'm, I'm, again, up for the challenge. I've done it before. I've, every place that I've, pretty much every place that I've worked at, even the place that I'm at now for the, going on the sixth year. This particular park was a 4,000-acre park. Most cities don't have 4,000 acres of parkland. This particular park is 4,000 acres, and it was closed for eight years. It has 24 miles of trails, it has a historic ranch house that's on the National Register. It is a dark, international dark sky park. It is a wildlife refuge and also a environmental education center. This is one place. And so just wearing the different hats that needed to be done with the amenities that we have in that park, to me, is, is at a smaller scale than going into a municipal park setting to be able to provide all, all the activities and events and that for the multitude of different types of people with their needs and wants. But again, I've, I've, I've been a part of that for all my career, and coming back to Michigan, my own state, this is where I want to be. I'm, I'm, I, you know, some people tell me I'm crazy, you know, don't go back to Michigan in November, December, and you do. But I'm, I'm well aware of it. I know I was born and raised here, and this is the time for me to give something back that I left 25 years ago to attain the management experience, that I can now come back to the state of Michigan, to the city of Pontiac, and know full well that everybody there is, is waiting and wanting Parks and Recreation. Listen, the fact that we've all survived through COVID and the recession on top of those two things, if not anything else, told me as a Parks and Recreation professional how important Parks and Recreation is in our lives. When things are bad, when things are rough, you know, you, where do you go? And parks and recreation programs with family, friends, going to libraries, going to events, those are the things that are bringing the quality of life to us, and this is one of the things that, that create beautiful memories. So I want to be able to provide that to the folks of the city of Pontiac, and I look forward to it.
Next on the speaker's list, Pro Tem Carrington.
Thank you, President McGinnis. Good evening, Mr. Vince. If I pronounce your last name wrong, please forgive me. McCullough?
No worries.
Okay, yes. From reading your resume, I think, definitely, I think you have so much, a lot of experience. But what is your management style? You're coming from Arizona, and you're coming into a Michigan municipality. So what is your management style with taking this department over?
Certainly. Well, my management style is dealing with staff, it's always been an open and flexible style. It's a style where I lead by example, the fact that I've, I've done most everything, and even with staff to this day out into the park. You know, I, I, if I direct the staff a certain way, or I set up training for staff, you know, my style is for them to be able to ask questions, for them to be able to really, you know, attain that skill level that's going to benefit them. I, I'll tell you this, if somebody were to ask me what's the most successful thing that I've done in my career, and I will tell you this straight up, and that is the fact that the people that I've worked with and the people that I've trained over the years, hundreds and thousands of people, and, and I talk staff from the point of people that were paid and bucked here. To me, the, to give success to my career is based on the people that I've trained and how well they are doing to this day in the profession, what they know and what I've been able to, to give them and share with them, the knowledge and experience, and give them that opportunity as well to be able to attain as much-- give them that opportunity as well to be able to attain as much knowledge and information to be skilled for expression. To me, that's, that's valued.
All right. Thank you, sir. No more questions.
You're welcome.
The speakers list exhausted. I'll just conclude with one acknowledge for your benefit and the community's benefit. It's not every day that your final interview is conducted to a room full of 50 people. Public subject to the Open Meetings Act and public comment and agenda address. So we acknowledge the unique nature of that process. And because we have deliberated and asked questions, what comes next is the vote on the nomination by the city council to see if we will ratify and make final your appointment and hiring as Parks and Recreation Department Director. And it also speaks to the unique nature of working for a city, a municipality, and the rewards and challenges that come with that. We're grateful for you pursuing consideration for this position so that way we, as a city council, following the mayor's nomination, can make the best decision for this important, expanded service that we want to provide for our residents. The resolution reads, "Whereas the City of Pontiac has reestablished a Parks and Recreation Department with the passing of this fiscal year 2022-23 budget, and whereas the City of Pontiac currently has no director overseeing that department, and whereas Vince McCallough has been nominated by the mayor for the position of Director of Parks and Recreation, and whereas Vince McCallough has over 30 years of progressive and diversified experience providing recreation services in the public sector, and whereas Vince McCallough is highly qualified to lead the department, now therefore be it resolved, the Pontiac City Council approves Mr. Vince McCallough to be the Director of Parks and Recreation for the City of Pontiac." Roll call on the...
Oh, no need.
Roll call on the adoption of the resolution. Clerk Doyle.
Mr. President, we didn't get a movement.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's why I had my hand...
There you go. So Councilman Rutherford moves that. It's been seconded by Councilman Nicholson. Thank you both for ensuring we now have that motion before us. The resolution is the matter before us. Speakers list had been concluded, but I'll reopen it again now that we have the motion. Any speakers? No speakers. Roll call on voting. Clerk Doyle.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Seven yeas, no names.
That motion carries. Mr. McCallough, you are hereby hired as the new Parks and Recreation Director. We congratulate you remotely.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. Martin, for helping facilitate that as we transition back to the PowerPoint presentation. Our next item of business is adoption of an ordinance to amend the City of Pontiac reestablished general employees retirement system to account for changes to required minimum distribution rules. This is the second reading. It was moved and seconded last week, so it continues as a second opportunity for us to deliberate further. Now we revisit the discussion. Is there anything further the administration would like to provide for the council's deliberation?
Nothing additional, Mr. President.
Any further discussion? So again, this is federally mandated changes that must be made to pension systems throughout the nation, and so we are ensuring that we are, as President Emeritus Waterman stated, that we remain qualified, bona fide, and certified with the Internal Revenue Service. Mayor Grimald, am I correct in interpreting what's before us, is that it will actually, slightly, by a year and a half, expand the window, ensure that retirees have more options in terms of the age or time in which they begin to sort of activate their benefits, if you will?
That's exactly right. Most of this is governed by the collective bargaining agreement that governed the eligibility for retirement benefits. But this would allow for those who have already retired to opt to receive their benefits at a later age than federal law currently requires. So currently, federal law requires that if somebody is already retired, now it's different if they're still working, they can wait later to receive their pension benefits. But federal law had required, I should say, that people, if they were already retired, could not wait after they were 70 and a half years old to begin receiving their retirement benefits. This change in federal law actually allows people to wait, if they choose, a little longer until they're 72 years of age. And we need to modify our ordinance to keep it in accordance with federal law, which will just give city retirees an option to retire later if they so, and by retire, I mean utilize their benefits later if they so choose.
Any further discussion on the motion before us? As shared, this has been before the council previously, and of course, the reestablished GERS board, on which Councilman Parker represents this body, has been reviewing it further. And it was a request from the executive director of GERS, Director Munson, that it was brought to our attention. So we thank that team very much for making sure that our system is compliant with this vote. Hearing no further discussion, roll call and adoption. Clerk Doyle.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Seven yeas, no names.
The motion carries. The ordinance amendment is hereby adopted. Thank you very much. We now move to our next item of business. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to approve the salary increase for elections and clerk specialist position?
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Rutherford, seconded by Councilman Goodman. That item is now before us for consideration, and we give our city clerk the floor for further information. Clerk Doyle.
Thank you, Mr. President. As many of you know, the assistant city clerk, elections administrator, she resigned at the end of June. She got another opportunity in another city. And since that time, the election specialist has been really leading our elections effort. So this is a increase to compensate her for that.
So to recap, it's taking a current staff member who's taking on expanded duties to ensure that we are fulfilling our obligations for the administering of the elections that are forthcoming, that we want to make sure that the staff capacity is there. Any, Pro Tem Carrington, you have the floor.
Just one quick, President, a quick question, President McGinnis. This is for the clerk. Do you plan on revisiting and rehiring someone for that particular position for assistant city clerk, or are you removing this from your department?
Thank you, through the President. If you remember, a few weeks ago, maybe a month or so ago, I'm actually restructuring that position and have retitled that position to chief assistant clerk. We are conducting a search for that position. The duties have been expanded. We haven't been able to find anyone, so in a sense, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion? And I want to take this time up as well to thank the clerk staff, as well as those who have retired from the department that are, have been re-enlisted for the election season to assist, or how you've brought in additional support to make sure that the clerk's office can handle the expanded workload. So just want to say thank you to that team that's gone once more up to bat.
Right. Yes. Through the President, Myra Allen, who previously served as the deputy city clerk, has came back on a temporary basis to help us with the general election.
And we thank her for that. Any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, roll call on adoption of the resolution for the salary increase for elections clerk specialist position. Clerk Doyle.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Seven yeas, no names.
That motion carries. The resolution is adopted. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution recognizing October 2022 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month?
Moved by Carrington.
Supported by Rutherford.
It has been moved by Pro Tem Carrington, seconded by Councilman Rutherford. The motion is before us. Any discussion?
I do.
Councilman Rutherford, you have the floor.
Thank you so much. Breast cancer awareness month is so important, especially in our city. Breast cancer affects African-American women at a two times higher rate than any other community. It's important that we speak, and we're vigilant. On a personal note, prior to me getting on council, there was a lump in my arm which almost made me not run for council. Thank God that lump was benign, but the other one wasn't benign, and I had a serious scare that almost took my life. So when I say cancer awareness is real and it's important, especially with breast, with all types of cancer, but especially breast cancer, it is. So I employ everyone who hears my voice to go get a mammogram. It's free. You can get one at the Wellness Plan, you can get one at the Bernstein Clinic, you can get one at St. Joseph. It's free. Planned Parenthood gives out free mammograms. There's no excuse to not be aware and empowered. So I am so supportive of this, and thank you so much.
Thank you. Further discussion? Councilman Goodman.
To go off of that last point, I think it's extremely important that this is one of the many things that we as a society and a community take extremely important, because there are a lot of people who do not take their health seriously for one reason or another, whether it be through societal pressures to not incur costs, or whatever psychological reason that you do not want to know what's wrong with you, because that's a society that we've created. And I think it's extremely important that we have this discussion, that we put this in the forefront, because it's a good thing to tell people that, yes, you should take advantage of the things that are in front of you and take care of your health, because you only really have one shot at it. So I want to thank especially Legislative Attorney Sharp for drafting this resolution and, you know, Brandon Sack, because I think it's an extremely important thing to acknowledge.
Pro Tem Carrington.
Thank you, President McGinnis. This is, this is definitely a very important resolution. Breast cancer has definitely affected my family, and they are survivors, but it's definitely hit one person out of each of my, my aunts and uncles' family, my first cousin. So it's definitely, it's prevalent with African-Americans, and the key to them surviving is that they was able to catch it early. So again, I cannot overstate the importance of making sure in our community that we be proactive, making sure that we get checked for breast cancer. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
The mayor.
Mayor Grimald, you have the floor.
You know, I don't want to belabor this too much, but it is personal, I think, to a lot of us. You know, my mom is a breast cancer survivor. My sister-in-law is currently going through breast cancer treatment, and as Councilwoman Rutherford, I think, so eloquently said, it's not just breast cancer, it's all forms of breast cancer. And I know many of us have had relatives or family members who have been affected by all forms of cancer. But breast cancer in particular is a difficult, very difficult thing for women to go through. And I certainly think this is an important opportunity to commemorate those who we've lost to breast cancer, but also stand with those who have survived breast cancer.
Thank you. I'll be casting a vote in favor in memory of my Aunt Kathy McGinnis, Pianta, who passed away from breast cancer in 1998. Hearing no further discussion, roll call and adoption of the resolution. Clerk Doyle.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Seven yeas, no names.
The motion carries. The resolution is adopted. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution acknowledging the life of Dubre Newman?
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Rutherford, seconded by Councilman Nicholson, and it's a somber occasion. And as we shared at the beginning of the year, we make it a point to honor and recognize the life of those that worked for the City of Pontiac or served on a city board or commission or volunteered in a capacity for the city. And Mr. Newman served, among other capacities, as a Pontiac School Board trustee. I want to give the floor to Councilwoman Rutherford to read the resolution. Mr. Newman was a resident of Pontiac's District One. Councilman, you have the floor.
Thank you so much. Whereas Mr. Dupre Newman was a Pontiac resident and a highly involved member of our Pontiac community for many years, serving through multiple civic organizations and frequent volunteer activities, and whereas Mr. Newman held a number of professional roles in the field of public health, working in outreach positions within the Pontiac community and enduring, excuse me, enduring to connect with residents and resources in healthcare, whereas Mr. Newman was appointed to the school district of Pontiac Board of Education 2016, serving for the balance of 2016, and during 2017, and in 2018. And whereas Mr. Newman passed away on September 18, 2022, at the age of 63, which is a tragic loss for his family and our community now, therefore be resolved that the Pontiac City Council hereby acknowledges the life and service of Mr. Dupre Newman and mourns his passing and further. Resolved that the Pontiac City Council extends our deepest empathies to the family, the friends, the neighbors, and the colleagues of Mr. Newman. Pontiac City Council, September 22, 2022.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Both Pro Tem Carrington and I served when we were on the Pontiac School Board alongside Dubre Newman. And in fact, it was about 10 years ago in this room that I first met him. I think he spoke up during public comment. It was around election time, and he said in his very deep baritone, "Shut up and vote." And I'll remember that for as long as I live. We salute his memory. We thank him for, during his life, the work that he, and love he poured into the city and our residents to make the community stronger. Anyone else who wish to have the floor? Councilman Rutherford.
What I love about this man is that he took care of his own, and even when he didn't agree with you, you knew where he stood. His yes was his yes, and his no was no. So I'm asking publicly, that everyone in District One please be praying for the Newman family, especially Minister Michaela Newman, because this is a tragic loss to lose our husband in this way, and we need our prayers. And in District One, we always take care of own. So thank you.
Mayor Grimald.
Yeah, I think I've known Dubre and Malchaya since, well, since before even I was elected to represent Pontiac as a county commissioner way back in 2006. And, you know, it's, it's, my heart really goes out to Malchaya and the whole family. And yes, I would ask people to keep them in your prayers.
Clerk Doyle.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will be remiss not to mention that Mr. Newman and Mrs. Newman both have served as co-chair and chairpersons of our precincts during our elections for a number of years. So I want to express condolences on behalf of the clerk's office to the Newman family. Thank you.
Pro Tem Carrington.
Thank you, President McGinnis. Mr. Dubre, or ex-trustee Dubre, was definitely a friend and a colleague. And one thing I remember about him from sitting at the table with him is that he definitely didn't want to waste no time. So he definitely wanted the board to make sure that we be efficient with his time. So I'd just like to offer the Newman family my condolences in remembering Mr. Dubre Newman. He was one of the first people that I met 12 years ago when I moved to the City of Pontiac in a room of community leaders, that we was all invited together, hopefully, to encourage us to work together long-term. And I never forget that meeting. Him, Ms. Tamika Ramsey, Pastor John Smith was in that room as well, and he became a friend of mine over the years. And I thank the Newman family for all they do for this community.
Any further discussion? With that, speakers list exhausted. Roll call and adoption of the resolution acknowledging the life of Dubre Newman. Clerk Doyle.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Seven yeas, no names.
The motion carries. That resolution is adopted. We come now to the resolution to approve the conditional rezoning and entitlement agreement for 537 Bradford Street with Crown Enterprises LLC. This is a second reading. It was before the city council at last week's meeting. Mayor Grimald Administration, you have the floor for initial information.
Yeah, well, thank you, President McGinnis. And I know we spoke extensively about this last week, and I do want to turn it over again to Director Lockren for some additional comments. But I do just want to underscore again what a unique, once-in-a-generation opportunity this is for us to more than double the size of Murphy Park and to acquire free-of-charge enough acreage that we believe it will be very likely that the federal and state governments will approve this as satisfactorily mitigating our city's parks deficit. This is a really big win for the community. And although United Wholesale Mortgage did initially have serious concerns about the facility, that changed when they visited the other concrete plant operated by this company, just as I think we heard from some residents whose opinions changed when they visited the other concrete plant operated by this company. the other concrete plant operated by this company. And so, you know, facts matter, and the fact that this company does have a really great, strong track record of operating concrete plants in a responsible way that keeps dust and other potential pollutants down and under control is very, very important. And that certainly was a major factor in our administration's decision to recommend approval of this rezoning. And with that, if I may, Mr. President, I'd like to turn it over to Director Lockren.
Good evening, counsel. As President McGinnis described, I am here to present to you the second reading of the zoning map amendment with conditions, ZMA 22-07, Crown Enterprises. Crown Enterprises, the applicant, proposes a conditional rezone from R1, one-family dwelling, and M1, light manufacturing, to M2, heavy manufacturing. According to the application and the conditional rezoning and entitlement agreement, the applicant proposes to develop a concrete-mixed batch plant. All of the items have been presented to you before, and I would like to know if anybody has any questions on the information that has been presented. Otherwise, I can go through the council packet that I provided, item by item, but we can speak to each item individually by question and answer if you'd prefer.
Might be best to field questions first and see where that lets us stand. Councilwoman Rutherford, first on the speaker's list.
Two-part question. Good evening, Ms. Rachel. How are you?
I'm great.
Great. So just for clarity and for the citizens at home, exactly how many jobs are being created and how much are the jobs going to pay? That's the first part. And secondly, I read the article that was in the Fox 2 News about, in regards to how they did the land and buying the land. Is there any, has there or hasn't been any accusations to try to attack citizens and about selling their property for Crown to be able to build the cement plant?
Okay. Question number one. A letter was provided to counsel today by attorney Cheryl Jordan. She is the attorney for Crown Enterprises and here to speak if you would like. In that letter, it came by email, it stated that there will be 50 or more jobs paying up to $32 per hour. A number of those jobs are specifically union jobs, and the rest are no-skill to lower-skill jobs the company will train from within for promotions moving forward. As for your second question, I will have to let Crown Enterprises answer that. I am not aware of the Fox 2 report or of any process moving forward to ask other people to sell land.
I just want to, it's an article that actually was out, and so I'm asking, not in regards to this, not in regards to Detroit, I'm talking about here, has there been any acquisitions to require land being sold from the citizens that live in that district? Because what I don't want to happen is that people are saying that they're going to get their land sold and they're going to lose it. I want to get it on record, has there or has there not been?
May I let Ms. Cheryl answer?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Ms. Jordan.
And if I could, Mr. President, I do want to allow the company person herself to answer, but I do just want to emphasize, and I know Councilwoman Rutherford alluded to this, but just to be very, very clear, the Fox 2 report has nothing to do with the city of Pontiac or with property owners or residents in the city of Pontiac. It has to do, I believe, with another company owned by the same family in the city of Detroit. And so I just want to be careful about how we talk about this, to be clear about even what the accusations are contained in the media report. And so I just want to be very clear that even the assertions made in that media report do not relate to Pontiac or people here. It has to do with another company owned by the same family in a different city that I believe, although I'm eager to hear the company's thoughts, that I believe have to do with bridge disputes, not about any facility like this. But I'm eager to hear from the company.
Attorney Jordan.
Good evening. I'm Cheryl Jordan, legal director for Crown Enterprises. And Councilwoman Rutherford, absolutely not. Crown Enterprises has owned this property that we will be developing, as well as the 65 acres that we're donating for decades. The story that was in Detroit involves property that we are attempting to acquire by fair and reasonable methods, by the way. So, you know, what you see in the news media isn't always true. Fair, reasonable, way over market value and negotiated discussions with the residents around that neighborhood in Detroit. But as for Pontiac and this development, the answer is no, absolutely not. We've not approached anyone. We don't need to acquire any property because we already own it and we have for decades.
Thank you.
Other further discussion? Councilman Nicholson, you have the floor.
I want to verify, there are no active adjacent residential properties to where this parcel that they're developing in proximity, where essentially they're giving us the property that would be a 65-acre buffer between this, the park, and any other resident, active residential properties, correct?
There are adjacent residential properties, but not immediately adjacent. You would have to cross Murphy Park to get to those residential properties.
So we're talking acres?
Yes.
Thank you.
At least a quarter mile.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any further discussion? Councilwoman James, you have the floor.
Yeah, I consider this a really weighty decision. It's a decision that you have to weigh a number of things. And, you know, we're looking at the argument that planning had in regards to the proposal was that it did not meet the planning, you know, it goes away from the master plan. And, but the South Boulevard corridor is already very well-developed as a corridor. So it's not like you're looking at downtown, which, you know, you're changing something that isn't developed. South Boulevard is already well-established as a corridor, and the biggest player on that, in that corridor, is in support of this change. Where I am concerned, because trying to weigh this out, where I'm concerned is if we approve this, it calls for Crown to be able to immediately establish a temporary facility. My concern is the whole issue of what street they're going to use has not been resolved, even though you have an agreement that you will work together to resolve it. I wish that there was time that that could be worked out before we actually have trucks hitting the road. And that's not going to happen, because we are going to agree to allow them to immediately start a temporary facility. So how do we work that, how do we work through, what street are these trucks going to use? Because the trucks are an issue.
Mayor Grimaldi, and then feel free to enlist additional staff.
Well, and I may want to invite representatives from United Wholesale Mortgage to speak on this as well, because I want to make sure I'm not misrepresenting anything. But my understanding is that, well, just to amplify your point, Councilwoman, the agreement calls for the city, United Wholesale Mortgage, and Crown Enterprises to work together to seek funding from the state to construct a roadway directly out to Uptite. There's no guarantee that the state will provide that funding, and this arrangement is not contingent on the state providing the funding. The arrangement is also not contingent on that road being developed, and certainly there's no obligation for the city to fund that road. That's very clear, that the city is not on the hook to provide funding for such a road. Even if the parties ultimately obtain enough funding from the state to build such a roadway, that obviously won't occur in time for the temporary concrete plant. The agreement is very clear that the temporary concrete plant, by the way, can only operate for 12 months and not any longer than 12 months. And certainly, the city's attorney is here if people want to ask about that. And I actually would invite the city's attorney, who's been working on this for some months and continues to finish working on this, to speak to that provision. But my understanding of Crown, excuse me, of United Wholesale Mortgage's position, and I'd like to hear from them, is that they're okay with Crown Enterprises using one of the two existing roads for that temporary plant. That road being the Center Point slash Meadows roadway that lies to the far east of the United Wholesale Mortgage property, immediately next to the sports complex that's owned by United Wholesale Mortgage. What United Wholesale Mortgage is not okay with is for Crown Enterprises to use the street further west that's immediately adjacent to the main campus of United Wholesale Mortgage, that road being Bradford. And I think I see United Wholesale Mortgage nodding in agreement with my summary of their position. And so the real issue is trying to make sure that Crown Enterprises only utilizes the east roadway, Meadows and Center Point, for access to the temporary plant. United Wholesale Mortgage would like the city to vacate that west roadway, which is Bradford, and that's something that our administration supports doing. There's a process that needs to be followed to do that, but doing so would actually save the city money, because we would no longer have to maintain that roadway, or the streetlights there, or the stormwater sewer along that roadway. And that roadway is really, well, it is, in fact, a dead end currently, that dead ends at what is currently Crown Enterprises' property, and it runs immediately along the eastern boundary of United Wholesale Mortgage's property. There are a couple other companies that utilize that roadway, and United Wholesale Mortgage is willing to give them permanent easement, so they can still get out to South Boulevard. But United Wholesale Mortgage would like to be able to restrict any heavy truck traffic from using that route. And one way to ensure that is for the city to vacate that roadway, so that United Wholesale Mortgage controls that access and can privately enforce any restriction on heavy trucks along that current route. So I would invite the city's attorney, Mr. Chubb, to speak to this question about the 12-month period for the temporary batch plant. And then certainly, if United Wholesale Mortgage would like to speak, we welcome your input as well.
Good evening, honorable counsel. So the mayor is correct. There are two real deadlines within the agreement. One is a limitation that they can operate the temporary batch plant for a period of up to 12 months, and the second is that they are required to have the project completed within three years. We know that they're going to likely do it within that year, because they're going to want to have consistent operation, transitioning from the temporary plant to the permanent plant. But, you know, in the review of this, we also did note, and it's really important to understand, even when they're under the operation of a temporary plant, there is a lot of oversight at both at the local and state level. And so it can come from Eagle, it can come from OSHA, the County Health Department, and other county agencies, as well as our local ordinance enforcement. And to that extent, we did also place a provision within the agreement that if there is a final determination that they have created a nuisance on the property, then Crown is prohibited from continuing operation on that property.
And did United Wholesale Mortgage's representative want to speak to that? I've got everybody's hands.
Thank you.
Counsel, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Barry Sesny from United Wholesale Mortgage. Just wanted to reiterate and agree with what the mayor had stated previously. You know, our initial concerns were the additional truck traffic going on Bradford, which cuts through the main part of our northern campus. But we've worked it out with Crown and the city that we would move that traffic over to Meadows, which is more closer to our sports complex, which has less foot traffic, less, you know, issue with our team members. So if that is true, that's how, you know, we will move forward in support of this project. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Shout out to Mr. Sesny being a resident of Pontiac in District One. Speaking for a first-time, Councilman Goodman.
So I have a question, and this is more for you, Ms. Lockren. Was this officially approved or denied by the planning commission?
This was, that question is a little hard to answer, as there was a motion at the planning commission to approve, and that motion failed. So essentially, it was denied by the planning commission, but there was never then a second motion to deny. The project, the proposal, just died after the motion to approve that did fail.
So the follow-up question I have to that, because I'm looking at the transcript from that planning commission, because a commissioner on there asked a question about whether it needed a final denial or not. And I see that former planning employee, Mr. Gustafson, spoke with legal counsel for, would that be Attorney Chubb? Or is there a different legal counsel?
They consulted with attorneys prior, because I imagine it's happened over the years at other planning commission matters. And so what was shared per the transcript is that by it not having a sufficient number of votes to be an approval or a recommendation to city council, it serves as a denial. It's de facto denial.
Thank you. So then with that, that does answer a question. Another concern that was brought up is like the compatibility with the rezoning with the master plan. Now, I do obviously have the concern in common that our master plan is kind of old and out of date. It needs to be really, I say, updated for the purposes that we want to move forward. But my question is, like, how does this rezoning relate to the master plan?
Well, there are multiple ways where this rezone does in fact meet the master plan. So the master plan does state, I'm sorry, I'm looking for my notes, that it supports the growth of business. And I can tell you the exact language, sorry. I did a lot of research, so I have a lot of notes.
And so also, to say this more, the concern is not necessarily where it does. I just, I want it to be known as to where the discrepancies lie.
I would say that, how can I say this best? There are a lot of nuances to the master plan. And if you focus your view on residential, then you could come to the opinion that this doesn't meet the master plan. But if you focus your view on parks and transportation and growth of trails and growth of business and supporting jobs for this community, then this project does, this project does meet the goals of the master plan.
So the question that I originally had still technically is not answered, which is, like, what were the concerns from the people in planning as to, like, what this did not meet in the master plan?
I believe that the concerns from the planning commission were those of the planner on this issue. And I'm looking for the planner's words here. I have included them in these notes. I'm sorry.
It might be helpful, one, so they offer complies, does not comply. One of the does-not-comply with sort of their standard root trick was about sort of the cohesiveness about the surrounding zoning. And so the issue is they don't prefer, when they can avoid it, to create a zoning of a classification, in this instance, M2, when there isn't surrounding M2 already there. And I took that into consideration and also considered, well, there's a few random spots that are R1, and there's no way that there's going to be an R1 development happening behind what is now a very, you know, growing and substantial commercial operation where upwards of 9,000 people are working in between a park, where there's already this industrial and manufacturing operation happening along Bradford Drive. So, you know, the idea is to not create these pockets of sort of sore thumb. Yeah, so when we were considering the Lawrence rezoning, it was also, well, it's also originally manufacturing, because it's along a rail line. So there's, you know, we're taking into account, we don't want to create pockets where we can avoid it, but we don't want to also use that to strangle off where it makes it cleaner or tidier, because it makes more sense in this M1 area that there be M1 and M2 versus M1, and then all of a sudden, there's small, single-family residents. It just doesn't really gel. And so, but that was one of the recommendations of does-not-comply, because they're looking, okay, what's around it? And there aren't other M2s around it, but there is an M1 there. And there aren't other M2s around it, but there is an M1 there, and there's these two sort of random slivers of R1, which, in my mind, are not compatible, and it's sort of existing outlier of the existing zoning map. Mayor Grimal on that same point?
Yeah, just to piggyback on that, and of course, it's hard to speculate about what was the rationale of someone who's not here to share their thoughts, of course, but the sense that I had was essentially what President McGinnis said, which is, it was pretty much as simple as a concern that, well, it's not the current zoning. And the current zoning there is M1, which allows for many kinds of manufacturing. So that's already allowed there. There's a small sliver of residential, but as I think Director Lockren has expressed in the past at the last meeting a week ago, there's no plausible likelihood that residential would be developed next to manufacturing in that context. And that ties in, I think, to your point, Councilman Goodman, that that aspect of the master plan with this small sliver of residential wedged up against manufacturing did not, in fact, make sense. And in terms of the rezoning from M1 to M2, obviously, we rezone things. That's something that we've done already this year with the Lawrence Street property. So we obviously have the option to rezone, the planning commission has the option to rezone, and it's really about looking at the broader goals of the master plan, which is why Director Lockren started talking about the overarching goals of the master plan in terms of investing in parks, expanding trails, fostering sensible economic development. And from those benchmarks, this is very much in compliance with the city's master plan.
Deputy Mayor, did you also have an answer on that?
Just, so I've worked on a couple of master plans in my time, and one of the shortfalls of the master planning process is that you have to create a map. And so, the map does not always, actually not does not always, very rarely is able to actually project into the future what is going to happen. So as Director Lockren said, as the mayor reiterated, if you're really looking at the master planning process and trying to take it holistically, you're going to pay more attention to the goals of the master plan than the actual color-coded parcels. And so, one can look at the color-coded parcels and say, the master plan, the future land use plan says that this parcel is slated to be used for this reason. The reality of the situation is, seven years ago, 10 years ago, however long ago that master plan was put together, no one could have contemplated all of the possibilities of what the market was going to come to bear and say, this is the highest and best use of that property. And so, today, as you look at that and you have a real use in front of you, and you ask yourself, what was the master plan trying to accomplish? Forget about the, because it is required. You can't leave a spot on the map as undetermined. Every piece of that map has to be coded for something. And so, that is one of the downfalls of the master planning process. You end up with these guesses of just like, well, we're just going to put it this because everything else around it is this as well.
And so I have one final question in this round. So taking all that in, I do have a different question. I noticed that in many, in most, in a couple different ways, that this process that we're going through for this specific development is a bit of an expedited process. And so, the question that I have is, you know, through doing it this way, what checks and balances is the city itself losing when it comes to, like, the site planning and accountability for this project?
Typically, for the site planning process, the city counts parking spaces, the city looks at the position of the building on the site, the city verifies that there is, there are enough trees and shrubs planted around the building. We are expediting this process, and we are comfortable with doing that because this site will be in the M2 district. It will be buried behind the current Crown, or Central Trucking Transport Building. It will be behind United Shore. It's more than a quarter mile from South Boulevard. So the average person will not see this site. All of those requirements will still apply. They will still have to meet the parking requirements, they will still have to meet the landscape requirements. The council is not being asked to vote for anything that doesn't meet Michigan State law. So this proposal will have to meet all of the building code requirements. A complete set of construction documents will be submitted and will be reviewed by the building department. So basically, we are cutting out site planning, we are not forcing this company to go through the variance for the height of the two silos that sit on top of the building. Those do exceed our height requirement for this district. And, am I missing something? Is there a third thing? No? Okay. So those are the things that we are expediting for this company because we know what the building looks like that we're approving. They have provided us elevations of what that building will look like. So we won't have any surprises with the building or the positioning of it. They did submit a site plan to us, and it has, but it was in the planning commission packet, it is in your packet. That is the site plan that they will be building too. And that's what we are comfortable with approving. Asking you to approve, I'm sorry.
Yeah. So then, for the community's benefit, can you, in a very short, couple-sentence version, like, say, like, what parts of the process that we would normally go through that we are essentially removing, or removing from our normal process to do this? Just so we have an actual, like, small list of what those procedures are that are changing?
We are removing the planning process where we do the site plan review, and the steps it takes to go through the special use permit and height variance. Those are the processes that are being expedited.
Thank you. That's it for right now.
Anyone else to which is to speak for a first time, which would be...
I haven't spoken.
You spoke, it was brief, I think, unless I'm remembering a previous... Did you have your finger earlier? Okay, so you may be for a first time, but in case it isn't, but you're up, Councilman Nicholson.
Thank you. The planning commission, I have two points. The first is, the planning commission's vote and looking at the transcript, there were four individuals in attendance at that meeting, correct?
At various times, there may have been five, but four...
During this vote, three voted in dissent, so that was not a formal majority of the planning commission, correct?
That's true.
Okay. That's my first point. The second is, I, as was mentioned before, went with Ms. Taylor, and Councilman Goodman was there as well, to see the site in Warren. That is, you know, a few really great things. Usually, when somebody comes to the council, they tell us all the things that, you know, are positive, and they make really positive, they cast things in the most positively possible, right? We were told in the, the expectation is 12 months for the temporary site. When we were in Warren and we saw the temporary site was already taken down, the new site was up, with the exception of a couple of windows that they're still waiting for. That was, that process was only six to eight months. And now we're doing this, you know, I mean, you're doing this potentially, you know, starting right out in a temporary space in the winter. You know, there is a huge, if it already wasn't, if it was six to eight months and it wasn't in the winter, the interest in getting the temporary site down and the permanent site up is certainly there for this applicant. Two, one thing that I thought was particularly interesting, the silos, I know we keep talking about them, I want to say, they were not in any way obtrusive or unsightful. They are not large silos, they're relatively thin silos that come up, and they're inside, majority inside of the building. Watching the process, there was, again, like the resident said, no dust, no runoff, it was, is very, very well-contained. All of the aggregates were being sprayed to ensure that that was happening, they were all contained within cinder block, built, you know, partitions. My family is in the concrete business, this was in, I say professional, it's beyond professional. The process itself, too, does not lend itself for some of these things that we're concerned about. We're talking about taking from three piles of aggregate, they run up a conveyor belt that is fully covered, so even under gale-force winds, you're not getting anything coming off, it's fully covered. It goes inside of a closed building, which the inside of the closed building is also completely clean, and it is put into a hopper that actually has a cover on both ends. So anything that is on top of or inside of the hopper, they close off. It goes right into a hopper that is fully closed into a, into a cement mixing truck, and off it goes. I mean, the process is very short. For me, the benefit is, we've got aggregate that is being driven through the city on an everyday basis. That is where the dust comes from. If there are more places for this aggregate to go, stop, and be cared for, and turned into a product that is not dust-driven, I think it is actually environmentally positive from my perspective. Looking at the building that they had and the renderings that we have, making sure, it was, it was nice to hear the applicant really consider that it matched with the buildings nearby. So in Warren, the building was clad with red, in Pontiac, it'll be clad with blue, similar to the United Wholesale Sports Complex. It really does feel like, looking at this site, and I'll tell you, the site in Warren is not adjacent to a park or a sports complex. It's a primarily industrial area, and it was the nicest thing on that street. So, and that's not bashing the neighborhood, it's just to be really honest. It was, it was really nicely done, and I left feeling very, very confident and comfortable. Is there anything that I said that was incorrect or off the, with the planning commission?
Hey, I just learned a lot about enclosed hoppers and all sorts of stuff.
It was great, and along that process, there are dust containment, there's dust containment machines, right, that, that if, at any point, it actually, it behooves them to pull that out of the system, and then they reuse that dust that comes out back into the system. So, I mean, it really is a very self-contained, very thoughtful, very, very professional operation. I was very impressed.
To prompt you with a follow-up, you had shared on your experience in terms of interacting with staff members there, that what they had provided at last week's council meeting was reinforced, you know, with just anecdotal interaction with staff members.
Yeah, just people who were walking past, hey, you, come here, tell them about this. And it was, every piece of information that we received was, in fact, better than what was brought to us, you know, timelines being better, just the physical plant being beyond the expectation that was even delivered last week.
Thank you. Speaking for a second time, Councilman Rutherford, Councilman James, Mayor Grimal.
Three questions, yes or no. First question, was the issue with United Wholesale Mortgage put in the contract where it could be physically seen in regards to what they are asking for? So yes or no?
Sorry, which condition is that, Councilwoman Rutherford?
So, if you recall, Rachel, I gave you the specifics, I don't have my notes, but I'm talking about where they wanted it to be, a portion of the parcel of the land, that they wanted to remain a M1. Has that been resolved? Is it in writing?
That is not in the conditional rezoning agreement, but it has been worked out between United Shore and Crown Enterprises. And United Shore is, I wasn't a part of their negotiation, so I can't necessarily respond to that, but I was told that they are satisfied with the lower portion of that land.
Yeah, just to, in a...
Mayor Grimal.
Yeah, if I could. This was a concern raised by United Wholesale Mortgage. They are satisfied that they have what they need from Crown Enterprises so that they are no longer concerned, and that's not something that the city has been involved in, but if that's something you'd like United Wholesale Mortgage to speak to, perhaps they'd be willing to.
I'm just asking because I asked to ask, was it in writing? So that, was it resolved, into your liking, sir?
I'm from Mur, talked with Crown yesterday, and we discussed about...
Could you go up there so people can hear? That way, won't nobody say I'm just saying stuff.
Hi, thank you again. And yes, in our previous discussions with Crown, we discussed the very small portion, I believe it was parcel two, located at the very edge of Bradford. We'd like, are concerned to have a buffer zone between our campus and kind of the new construction, remain that M1, I believe Crown had obliged in our concerns. An email's from Dan Sampa as well, I don't know if you could speak to that as well?
Hi, Cheryl Jordan. There were originally five parcels we were asking to be rezoned. We removed one to remain M1. I believe this is the parcel you're speaking of. So while it's not in writing, it's just not being changed, it's remaining as it is, and that's reflected in the agreement.
Okay. Second question, Rachel. Is it in writing that, win or lose, whether they get this, that we are going to keep the 65 acres? Is that in writing where it says that?
No. If we don't, if you don't receive the approval...
No, not the approval, I'm talking about, if they get approved, and then something happens, some unfortunate accident happens, do we get to keep the land?
Oh, yes.
Is it in writing?
Yes, that is in writing.
Two. Last one, most important. Is it in writing that they will be providing actual training and making sure that they hire within the community? Is it in writing?
Yes, Councilwoman, it is in writing.
That's it, I got my vote. Okay, thanks.
Pro Tem Carrington for a first time?
Yes. President McGinnis, I'd like to call for the vote.
Thank you.
There's Councilwoman James and Mayor Grimal are still on the speakers list, so you want to do a motion to end debate and go into voting?
If these are new questions posed, I say I will remove of my call, but if it's the same circular questions that we've been dealing with, I would, I would rather have a call for the vote.
Councilwoman James?
Yeah, I, you know, I didn't write it down, now I can't even remember what...
She's saying that she withdraws her question at this point. And then, as the final person on the speakers list, I represent District 7, where this site is entirely contained. We brought this matter to the residents of the Village of Oakland Woods, that complex at Kirkman Boulevard off of Opdyke. We also brought it at multiple meetings to our District 7, our East Side Community Meetings. Residents in both of those venues, when they learned about the possibilities, were very receptive to this proposal. I believe it will be transformational for us as the city of Pontiac to acquire land worth upwards of many millions of dollars, 65 acres, at no direct expenditure by us taxpayers, which allows us to determine what happens with those dozens of acres. Some may be parkland, there may be some other public, or keeping them at natural use if they remain as they are now. They've been owned by a private company for over five decades, which they could have redeveloped, could have turned into other industrial uses, which would then further encroach. But this is, I think, a stronger position and a stronger hand for us as residents and on behalf of the residents to be able to make strong transformational decisions. So I will be continuing to vote in favor and thereby doubling the largest park in the East Side, Murphy Park. Did you also...
I have a final...
Okay. Councilman Goodman?
So, and this is for, quick questions to call a couple things. Can you briefly go over the difference between cement and concrete, if it has not been gone over tonight for everyone here?
Gary Kelly, Vice President.
Can you speak more into the microphone, please?
I'm sorry.
Yep, there we go.
Good evening. Gary Kelly, Vice President, Hercules Materials Holdings, Zeus Concrete. So there is a difference between cement and cement production and concrete and concrete production. To make it very simple for you, cement is the powder that is used in conjunction with aggregates and water to make the final product, which becomes concrete. We are not a cement producer, we are a concrete producer. We do not emit CO2 gases. Actually, concrete absorbs CO2 gases. We're a sustainable company, we recycle, it's part of our business, we recycle 100% of our concrete. So if there's any other questions regarding concrete, I can answer that for you.
And then with this, I assume that, like, because of what we've been saying, your plants comply with the Eagle requirements, correct?
We do.
So then, separate from this, and this is no longer for you, this is a... So then, separate from this, and this is no longer for you, this is a comment, and that will be done. I think that this is a overall net positive thing that we are attempting to do. I do want to make it very well known that like, my biggest gripe and concern with all of this is that, as how it was brought to us, I feel that procedurally, we did not do this the best. And I feel that this kind of puts us on a slippery slope when it comes to like, future planning and development. And the last thing that I want to do is put us in a rough position as a city, when we are given different developments, that we may possibly actually want to use procedure to save us. And in some ways, as we've been acting in the past couple months, we've been kind of sort of being lackadaisical with that, in a way to do good things. And I want us to make sure that we're not setting ourselves up for a more difficult time down the road, when we may actually want to use the way that things work to save us. So that is just my final comment, but I am done there.
Well, the speakers list is exhausted. It would be time for us to vote. One of our colleagues is not at the table, and if he is in earshot, I want to give him a moment to be able to render his vote as well. So this is a resolution to approve the conditional rezoning and entitlement agreement for 537 Bradford Street, which is in the City of Pontiac. The applicant is Crown Enterprises LLC. They have owned this land for over 50 years. With this resolution, if it passes, there will be a gift of 65 acres of what's currently privately held land donated to the City of Pontiac, you and I as residents and taxpayers. This is a second reading. It was before the City Council last week. It was before the Planning Commission in September and in May. And with that, speakers list is exhausted. Roll call on adoption of the resolution. Clerk Doyle.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Seven yays, no nays.
That motion carries. Thank you to City Council for thorough deliberation this week and last week. Now we move to the next item. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to support the Michigan Department of Transportation project to convert the existing one-way configuration of the Woodward Loop and Cass Avenue to a two-way configuration and reconstruct M59 within the Woodward Loop?
Move Carrington.
Support by Rutherford, but I have a question.
It has been moved by President Pro Tem Carrington and seconded by Councilwoman Rutherford. The motion is now before us. I want to give the floor initially to the administration and the state to present what's before us. And then first on the speakers list will be Councilwoman Rutherford and appointed personal representative.
Well, thank you, President McGinnis. I will just hit some important introductory notes here before we bring up MDOT to speak briefly about it, and then to certainly answer questions. But this is a proposed project that has been discussed for about 10 years now, I think, in total, here in the city. And the idea here is pretty simple. We currently have a five-lane, surface-level highway looping around our downtown that is one direction. And although the posted speed limit on that is 35 miles per hour, people routinely drive 50 or more on it. And so there's certainly a safety concern there. But even more importantly, there is a concern in terms of what it means for the quality of life in our downtown and our ability to attract visitors and to reinvigorate our downtown and make it the vibrant, prosperous, diverse, and inclusive place we all want our downtown to be. This five-lane, one-way, superhighway really acts as a kind of moat that separates downtown from the surrounding neighborhoods. Although it's perhaps more in one's perception than in the actual distance, it seems very physically imposing to pedestrians. And so we don't see a lot of pedestrians regularly crossing the Woodward Loop. It feels very much like downtown is an island. There are other challenges we have in reinvigorating downtown, so I'm not suggesting that this alone is the solution to all of our challenges in bringing back downtown. But it is certainly one important and in our view, essential element, among others, to bringing back to life our downtown. And it will do so by better connecting downtown with neighborhoods, making downtown as a whole more pedestrian-friendly, and also by making downtown, by switching not just the Woodward Loop, but we hope other streets, from one-way streets to two-way streets in and around downtown. It will make it easier for visitors to navigate our downtown, because whenever someone who's not familiar with an area encounters one-way streets, they can't go left or right to get to their desired destination, but they have to go one way, and then they have to loop back. And so it's just a way to make our downtown a lot more user-friendly, a lot more pedestrian-friendly, and to really create more of a sense of community and livable space in and around our downtown. It does come at a very large expense. I know that a question was asked earlier about how much does the project cost? The total cost of the project is about $30 million. We're very fortunate that MDOT is paying the vast, vast majority of that amount, such that the city will be left with about $1 million of that total of $30 million price tag. We wouldn't have to start paying that until the project actually begins, which won't be until late 2024 at the earliest. And really, the project won't really get underway until 2025 and 2026. And it is our hope that we can pursue grant funding to pay for at least the majority of that million dollars. Secretary of Transportation, the United States Secretary of Transportation, Pete Buttigieg, has really made it a point to launch initiatives with the federal U.S. Department of Transportation to reconnect communities. The City of Detroit has successfully applied for a huge amount of money to change, from the federal government, and has been awarded over $100 million to change I-375 from a depressed expressway to a surface-level street. And I-375 infamously was taken right down the middle of Hastings Street in Detroit's Paradise Valley and displaced the most prosperous black business community in Detroit. Now, the construction of the Woodward Loop actually displaced a number of black residents who lived near downtown at the time as well. But it also, again, really separated downtown from neighborhoods. And so the federal initiative to provide funding to reconnect communities is a prime opportunity, we believe, to obtain some funding to pay for this matching amount that the city would have to spend. But again, the city's only on the hook for 3% roughly of the total project cost, and we believe there are grant opportunities that we can pursue to obtain much, if not all, of that funding.
Thank you, Mayor Grimal. Councilman Rutherford, you first on the speaking list.
Good evening. Just want to ask a couple of questions. What's your name, by the way, ma'am?
Veronica Lamb.
Good evening, Ms. Lamb. First question, how many community engagement meetings did you guys have throughout this process?
So, we presented at City Council, I think, believe, back in April, so we're back to you again, seeking the resolution to support the project. We did two Town Hall meetings in July, and then we just did two public meetings where we did a presentation last week, Monday and Wednesday evening.
Okay. And what was the relative feedback from the community?
I would say it was a mixed bag, of course. People come with their questions. It did seem at the second meeting that we had more support. And then, I think at the first meeting, more people missed the presentation, so they came in with more questions that were, I would say, opposing it. But I would say in general, after hearing us talk about it, letting us answer their questions, people were more in support. They still might have had concerns that we're addressing through design, or that we'll look more into after they presented them to us. But that was why we did the community engagement, was to get that input from the residents to talk to us about the project and give us some of their feedback.
And lastly, my last question is this. Are you guys going to be engaging local companies such as ARC, or private companies to get, actually be helping assist with the actually renovations of the Loop? I know MDOT is, I just want to know, would it be...
So, due to federal regulations, we have to be very, we can't, we have to follow strict processes and guidelines. So, there are, MDOT does have some allowances for minority businesses to be, to participate in the project. So that's one opportunity. There are other opportunities, you know, with the prime contractor to do some, you know, workforce training and so on as well. But we can't specifically go to ARC and say, okay, you have to, you're going to do this project. No. It has to be an open, transparent, competitive process.
Thank you, Abdul.
President Pro Tem Carrington, you have the floor.
Thank you, President McGinnis. This is for the administration. You said that the city will have to come up with 3% of this overall cost of this project? So 30 million is roughly, what, 3 million, if my math is correct?
No, it's about $1 million. So, and I believe that's about 3%. In any event, the 3% was my calculation based on being told $1 million by MDOT. So the $1 million is the MDOT figure. I believe, if my math's correct, that's approximately 3%.
I can touch on that a little bit, sorry. So, it's a 20% split and 80% split between FHWA, the federal government, and the state, and the city would pay 2% of what the state is putting in. And so calculating that out, it's roughly about $1.2 million based off of our $30 million estimate. Sorry for interrupting.
All right, thank you. So is this a project that we can use ARC funds for?
That's actually a very interesting question. In general, I would say no, because, and I think that probably is the ultimate answer. Road funds, and I, you know, I don't know if we have Alex Born guesser here or not, because she certainly knows more about this than I do. But road funds are not a listed permitted use of ARPA funds. But I think more problematically than that, I think they're an expressly prohibited use. Now, I think there are some exceptions to that if a permitted use for ARPA funds necessitates changing roads. So in other words, a expressly permitted, expressly permitted use of ARPA dollars is sewers, for example. If you're using ARPA dollars to replace sewers, then I believe you can also use them to replace the roads that go over the sewers. The question is, is this an expressly permitted use in terms of reconnecting neighborhoods or revitalizing downtown, such that it could allow for the use of ARPA dollars, even though roads are generally a not permissible use? And I don't know the answer, but Director Born guesser, maybe you can speak to it.
So, this question would require some research, and how best to fit this into the Treasury's final rule. As the mayor noted, I'm sorry, when did I ran from my office after listening to the meeting? After reviewing the Treasury's final rule, the subject of road reconstruction is not a permissible use of American Rescue Plan dollars, except in the instance that a water system runs underneath the roadway and will require road reconstruction. That said, there might be other amenities surrounding the Woodward Loop conversion project that might be a permissible and express use of American Rescue Plan dollars. So I would ask that you give me some time to review that and get back to you with a firm answer.
All right, thank you.
Councilman Nicholson?
Hello, Abdul, it's good to see you. We have talked before on other projects, so I'm sure everybody's gritting their teeth when they say Councilman Nicholson. I just want to say, I want to make sure that in all of this, that the feedback or things in past, under past administrations are, there's a lot of thoughtfulness about this. Because when we've had talks about projects in the future, there's been thoughts about what has gone on in the past, or what the city's been able to handle in the past. And our infrastructure looks very different today, and is going to look even more different in the future. So I want to make sure, when we're considering especially things like green space, the city can manage it. We really, really want that green space. We want more grass, we want less concrete, we want less water and waste going into our sewer systems. You know, we will cut the grass. So when we're, I've seen some really great pictorials and renderings, and it incorporates a lot of green stuff, and I hope that makes it all the way through. That's, that's all I've got. Thanks.
Councilwoman James?
Yes. My concern with the Woodward Loop reconfiguration has always been that we approve these things without coming up with our own plans on what are we going to do as a city to make this change work for us. And I am proud to say that I have seen, since being on the council, what I think is a really good attempt to try to understand what we as a city want to do. How are we going to leverage off of this change so that once it goes in, the city has a plan? Not only just waiting until it goes in, but while it's going in, before it's going in, we are implementing our changes so that when it's all put together, the city is going to benefit from it. So, all of the meetings that we have had, looking at how we can bring the Clinton River Trail in through Pike and through downtown, there's been a lot of discussion around what we could do to implement changes around that loop. And I am very encouraged about that. Again, I think it's a great plan, but unless we have our plan to go with it, it really is not gonna, it's not gonna be the value to the city that we want. We need to know what our expectation is from this plan. And I think that the administration is making a good attempt to establish that. And so I'm really, I'm prepared to approve it at that, but I want to clarify that the most important thing about this plan is that we have a plan to go along with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Goodman?
I just want to go to point out that this is hopefully a good path forward into increasing the walkability of our city. Those of you who know me as the person who cares a lot about public transit and about making sure that a way, people are able to really take advantage of their community without having a car. As a person who has ridden the smart bus and had to not ride a bus into downtown, but walk from the riverside, across all five lanes of Woodward, almost dying on multiple occasions by people speeding through that red light, to make it into downtown. This would do a lot to encourage more people to actually experience the downtown and be able to make it something that is for them, opposed to for other people who are able to make it into downtown, or who have the desire to. And I just overall think that this is a good pathway forward to also do a lot of, undo a lot of the damage that has happened in communities like this, when you construct entire highways through and around them. Be it it had a great purpose when it was built at the time, we have moved beyond that moment. So I personally believe that this is one of the better things that we can do to help revive our city, especially as it relates to our downtown and how our residents, again, get to take advantage of those new developments in downtown. So that's my comments on that.
Thank you. With this decision, we are looking very far into the future, and we want to be as strategic as possible, because when the loop was looped, it set in motion many generations of changes that we are still living with today. I want to emphasize what my colleague, Councilwoman James, said, because I think it's very, very important. A road, no matter how substantial or how engineered, is truly just a road if there isn't thoughtfulness and investment into the land that surrounds it. Over 50 years ago, yes, almost 60 years ago, when what was Woodward Avenue fed into Saginaw Street and fed right into the downtown, it's before freeways, really. So that's why anyone coming from Detroit to go anywhere else in Michigan had to come right through downtown. had to come right through downtown Pontiac. For many of the shopping days, it was shoulder to shoulder on the streets of downtown Pontiac. So when that was sort of cut off and created this superhighway around our downtown with noble intentions, it for 60 years truly is just a loop if it's not built and redeveloped and staged around it. And so it'll be very important, and we welcome, to Councilman Nicholson's point, engaged communication all throughout so we can hone and refine the strategies that we're doing. And, you know, we're being really intentional and then also nudging the final plan so that way they're the most compatible for what the residents can benefit from now and then for 50 to 100 years from now. Because we don't want federal taxpayer dollars, state taxpayer dollars, and definitely not Pontiac taxpayer dollars to have to re-undo or do anything else. We want to make it something that's sustainable and is, is going to stand the test of time. But this Woodward Loop that we have today, it's, it's what we, you know, it's my whole life. It's what I know, it's my commute. And by the way, I live one very small block off of this. So for the construction, my life will be very, very challenging, but I'm willing to bite the bullet. But that, it was built for General Motors. When there were multiple massive plants, millions of square feet, thousands of trucks, buses, cars, and other manufacturing, and they needed to move those goods and parts, and they didn't want to meander through our historic downtown streets. So for them and the tens of thousands of workers with different shift change, that, that was good for that season, but that is not the world that we are in today. That is not the Pontiac we are in today. We want our major thoroughfares, this being the most prominent and the most directly impacting our downtown, to work for us residents, to work for our historic downtown and to integrate our neighborhoods with our downtown once more. We'll never recapture what there was, but there also, 120 years ago, there wasn't cars. So we're, we're continued to evolve, we'll keep evolving. And so we're grateful that the state of Michigan, through previous leaders' advocacy and continued efforts, and some employees that, you know, have come and gone, city engineers, DPW staff, others, this is sort of an ongoing passing of the torch. And now the torch is placed to us to make a, a decision about, is this a step, a bold step we want to make for the residents? We know that it will not be without challenges and it won't be without some discomfort. Construction inherently will. But we want to, through every step of the way, make sure that it is the most beneficial. These are substantial resources. We want to make it the most beneficial, get the biggest bang for the buck, and that the finished product is something that can benefit our current generation and then for many decades to come. Councilwoman Rutherford?
Can I call off with the vote now?
Well, there's no more people on the speaker's list, so I'll take that note. I thank you for that feedback, that speaker's list is exhausted. We now move on to voting on adoption of the resolution to support the Michigan Department of Transportation project to convert the existing one-way configuration of the Woodward Loop and Cass Avenue to a two-way configuration and reconstruct M59 within the Woodward Loop.
Can I add something to that? You guys are also voting to, we're applying for a grant with this project and you're also voting to support our grant application with your vote.
Thank you, yes. So that is included in the language of the resolution and they have a deadline of October 14th. So that's part of the reason why we've timed it. So that way you have ample time to finalize that and that the city of Pontiac has stated unequivocally where we are in that pursuit of the grant funding. Hearing, no further discussion. We close that discussion. Roll call on adoption, Clerk Doyle.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Seven yays, no nays.
That motion carries, the resolution is adopted. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to approve the renewal of the contract with Pipeline Management Company, Inc. for continuing servicing of the city of Pontiac's storm water services?
So moved.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilman Rutherford, seconded by Councilman Goodman. Mayor Grimald Administration, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr.
I'm sorry, let me make sure I got that right for the record. Who, who moved?
Nicholson did.
Nicholson moved and who seconded?
No.
Oh, Rutherford moved.
Okay, got it, all right. Sorry about that.
I welcome Mr. Cooley to walk us all through this.
Good evening, council. In the past, we have done a cooperative contract with Oakland County to use the services of Pipeline Management to do our sewer cleaning, catch basin cleaning, closed circuit televising of the, the storm sewer systems within the city. During our processes with our new purchasing agent, we found that Oakland County had renewed the contract and there's different contract numbers and language than what was previously approved by council. So what we're bringing before you tonight is to get the approval to continue to use Oakland County's contract. The current contract they have with Pipeline Management expires in 2023. I believe it's around January of 2023. So we're looking for an approval to continue to use this contractor until that time or until Oakland County gets a, a new contractor and we do a co-op with that contractor.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Councilman Parker and then Councilwoman James.
Thank you, sir. I just have one question as I was reading through this proposal. This is a company that's already supposed to be maintaining our sewer drainage system?
They, they are currently doing the work for us now. And as we were going through the processes, we found that this contract language had changed. It's a new contract that they have with Oakland County, so the contract number is different and there's some price increases which are included in the packet.
So who supervises them?
People within our department supervise them. So they, they don't just come into the, the community and do the work without somebody within the DPW assigning them that work. So as we do inspections and we find catch basins that are completely plugged or any issues that are ongoing with the storm sewers that need to be cleaned, we give them an atlas of the area that we want the work done in. And then we have one of our right-of-way inspectors or our engineering supervisor check their work as it's being completed. They, they also do any construction design work that we're doing for any road construction. They come in and they clean the storm sewer systems and televise them so that we know what type of work needs to happen, why the road is being tore out and reconstructed. So if there's any storm drains that are in disrepair, we can make them repairs while the road is open.
One last question. Has anybody told them about the Glenwood Perry Storm Drain?
At the intersection of Glenwood and Perry? Not that I'm aware of.
It's always clogged.
Is it, is it on Perry itself or is it on Glenwood?
Right.
If it's on Perry, that's an MDOT storm system and I can pass that on to MDOT.
And if anybody, well, if you look up Perry, all of them on Perry is just about clogged, but, okay.
Okay, yeah, I will pass that over to, to the gentleman at MDOT.
To another contractor if they ain't doing what the original contract calls them to do. That's all my questions. Thank you.
Councilwoman James?
Yeah, I'm just curious to know, are there any significant, you don't have to mention anything small, but you're saying that the reason why you're bringing this to us is that there's been some language change? Is there anything significant from what we've always had from them to what the current contract is? Is there any significant language changes?
No.
We need to be concerned about?
Yeah, the, the contracts pretty much parallel each other. There was just, I believe, a small pricing increase and I, I don't know the exact percentages, but it was a small percentage price increase. And then Oakland County had changed the contract number. So what, what our approval from the previous council was, had a different contract number than the contract that they're currently working off of.
Okay.
Protem Carrington?
Thank you, President McGinnis. I guess one of my questions is, I, I've been trying to deal with Oakland County on making sure we get some of these Oakland County drains cleaned. So Victory Street, is that, is that a responsibility of the city, Pontiac? Or is that Oakland, is what is connected to the Oakland County Drain System?
So Oakland County WRC only takes care of the sanitary sewer in the water system within the city. They do have some drainage districts within the city, but most of the road catch basins are maintained by us at the, at the city. It's, it's a DPW function.
So my follow-up statement is that I've been talking about the issue on Victory Street for the last past six months. And I definitely like, now that I know that the city's responsibility is that I would, I would love to see the city go out there and look at those particular drains on Victory Street.
Okay, I will add that to our notes.
Councilman Nicholson?
The, with the, you, you mentioned there were some slight price increases. Do you anticipate a budget amendment?
No, I, I believe we have a, a fair amount of budget to take care of the work we need done.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Rutherford?
Good evening, Mr. Al, how are you?
I'm doing well, how are you?
Thank you, I'm fine. Okay, two questions. The draining issue in Washington Park, you know, whenever it rains, there's always an issue with the draining. Is that for the city's portion or is it for the county?
We are working in conjunction with the county because as the, as that lower portion of Washington Park tries to drain into Crystal Lake, there's, the outlet is not allowing it to happen because the water level and the, the residue from the drains have built up. So we're working in conjunction with the county to try to get the, some trenching done out there. So it's, it's kind of a two-phase system. We both need to do some work out there.
Second part of the question, what's the timeline when that's going to actually occur? The reason why I'm asking is because you had a lot of rain, I stay in Washington Park, and it is affecting the day-to-day lives of the citizens on Burwick, Argyle, and Canterbury, to name a few.
Yeah, I know, I know the engineering staff are working on that, trying to come up with a plan and, and get that, like you say, there's got to be a little bit of dredging done to get that flow away from the piping and get it into the lake. I know they're working on it. I, I don't have an exact timeline because the engineering supervisor is out sick right now.
Okay, and last question, I guess, is for the administration. Mr. Grimald, are we actively pursuing funding to take care of this issue because it is affecting the foundations, it's affecting how you move? It's actually affect, it goes to the point where you literally could get killed where all the water sits in the middle of the street, like when it rains at this. So are we actively pursuing grants? I know Ms. Borngesser pursues others, but are we pursuing grants for this particular issue in Washington Park, which has been addressed four months ago, which I said, go ahead?
Yeah, so I, I know this is a very serious issue in Washington Park and I know that the DPW, it's my understanding, and I know it was just discussed, is working with the Oakland County Water Resources Commission to try to resolve that. But I guess the question I have is, is it a function of not enough funding? And if so, do we have an estimated cost that we need to raise funds for? I know that there was, is, is some question perhaps about the, and this has come up before too, about the condition of some of those stormwater sewer lines. And I know that we have this grant now to begin scoping our stormwater sewer system. And obviously, we should prioritize those areas where we have problems we already know about. But what, what is the lay of the land here? What is the limiting factor on getting this resolved with the Water Resources Commission?
So it's, it's not, it's not that we're having issues getting it resolved at WRC. It's, it's us getting the whole plan set together on getting the work completed. We did go out, and like I said, I know it's been a few months, but we did go out and clean that area. We did send the camera through them areas to get a good look at the piping, see what was going on so that we could address everything. And it's just in the process of getting a, a scope of work laid out, getting a contractor in there, getting the work done, and making sure that we're all on the same page while we're doing it with, you know, the different communities in Oakland County, with us in Oakland County is what I mean.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Councilman Goodman?
Well, I mean, I do have the obvious question that I've been looking at. So like, was this contract like lapsed for two years from what I'm noticing? Like, looking at these dates?
So what it looks to be is it, it lapsed within what was approved by the previous council, but there was always a continued contract at Oakland County. It just wasn't brought to our attention that it was a deadline and there was a contract number attached to it. We were under the impression it was a co-op. As long as there was an Oakland County contract, it was approved for us to use it. When we did some clarification on that, we noticed that it was, did have a, a date status and a contract number on that previous contract that the previous council had approved.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing, no further discussion, speaker's list exhausted. Roll call on adoption of the resolution, Clerk Doyle.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yep.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Seven yays, no nays.
That motion carries, the resolution is adopted. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to approve the budget amendment before us?
So moved.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilman Rutherford, seconded by Councilman Nicholson. This would increase for this current fiscal year the budget revenues in the amount of $19,372. The general fund account, 101-000-532-000, FBI Federal Grants, others, and appropriations, meaning what we're going to spend, in the amount of $19,372, that exact same amount, to the account of 101-301-818-069, FBI Professional Service, Oakland County Sheriff Overtime. This was before us two weeks ago when we authorized the clerk to post the notice so that way the community was aware of this impending decision. So now it is before us to determine if we'll amend the budget. And so I'll give the floor to the mayor. I see that there are some supporting individuals that can give more information and they can let their colleagues know that they spent multiple hours waiting for that $19,730, or $332. Mayor Grimald, you have the floor.
Well, this, this is, thank you, Mr. President. This, this is a budget item that does touch on a couple of different areas. Obviously, there's a grants component here and we do have our, our grants director, Alex Borngesser, here. It obviously also is, is more directly a budget amendment. And I know when we posted this budget amendment, we discussed the grants aspect. So in terms of the budget amendment aspect, I'd like to turn it over to Deputy Mayor Stevens, who's also our acting finance treasurer.
Thank you, Mayor. So because we did discuss it previously, I would ask, are there any specific questions that you have about the budget amendment instead of going over it again and again, just to go over it?
Councilman Goodman, you have the floor.
Just for the community's knowledge, so again, this is not us increasing the amount that we are spending. This is solely us accepting a grant that will obviously be, is, is being used to cover overtime or will be used to cover overtime. So we are not incurring any additional costs or money through this, correct?
Correct. This is, this is just us putting in place the paperwork to go along with the plan that is already in existence.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Councilman Parker, you have the floor.
For me, probably.
Yes.
Do we have any officers assigned full-time FBI task forces in the city?
So that is, that is what this gentleman is here to tell you about?
No. The auto theft. Do we have?
We, we do have, I don't know if he's assigned full-time, but we do have agents. The, it's similar to the auto theft in that we have, we have, the sheriff's county has officers who are assigned to a unit. Now, I don't know when we look at it, if it is a full-time assignment or a part-time assignment, but the, we do have officers who are assigned to the unit and then this overtime pay, this, this grant pays for that overtime.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing, no further discussion. Roll call on adoption of the resolution to approve the budget amendment, Clerk Doyle.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Seven yays, no nays.
That motion carries. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to approve the renewal of Pitney Bowes lease agreement?
Yes, so moved.
Support.
Moved by Councilman Rutherford, seconded by Councilman Goodman. The motion is before us. Mayor Grimald Administration, you have the floor.
Well, thank you, President McGinnis. And, and this is an exciting agenda item for, for me at least because we get to introduce you to our new purchasing manager. I know some of you have already met her individually, but we are thrilled about filling this position for a few different reasons. Number one, this is the most critical position as we seek to implement policies and procedures to prevent the irregularities of spending that occurred in the past that were revealed by the forensic audit. And so this is the most important position as we seek to put in place proper protocols moving forward. That's number one. Number two is that there's a lot of work to do with purchasing to make sure that we are moving forward and entering into the contracts we need to enter into, as was reflected earlier. And as council knows, there were a number of contracts that expired and were not promptly renewed. And that's a, a function of several things. But one of the things it's a function of is not having a person in the role of purchasing manager. And so we're thrilled to have the position filled. But even more importantly, we're thrilled to have the position filled by Ms. Martin because Ms. Martin is a Pontiac resident. She has because Ms. Martin is a Pontiac resident, she has incredible experience and expertise. She's the former purchasing manager at the Detroit Zoo for a number of years. And so, you know, it's a great example of the immense amount of talent that we have right here in our hometown. And we're just really, really excited to have you onboard, Purchasing Manager Martin. And without further ado, I'd like to turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor Grimal. And I apologize if I'm not saying something correctly or not following protocol correctly. Just give me a little grace this evening, I ask. I am before a city council to request authorization for the approval of an executed agreement signed by Deputy Mayor Calphaney Stevens for the renewal of the Pitney Bowes lease agreement. We were in a three-year lease agreement with Pitney Bowes. That agreement is expiring. Time was of the essence. We needed to renew the agreement. This agreement was executed by way of us participating with the state of Michigan, My Deal Cooperative. So what that means is that the state of Michigan has already went out and did the solicitation process for mail equipment, and Pitney Bowes was the awardee of that solicitation process. And so this particular cooperative is offered to many municipalities within the state of Michigan, nonprofit universities, townships, et cetera. So that makes the purchasing power greater because there are more entities participating within the program. That means that we get a better savings versus us going into it by ourselves with Pitney Bowes and trying to establish agreement. So that's the benefit of participating in a cooperative. So we have before us a five-year lease renewal. It actually is a little less per quarter than the initial lease agreement that we had. The quarterly amount was $877.17, I'm sorry, it was $912. The renewal for the quarter would be $877.17. Do I have any questions regarding the lease renewal?
Thank you very much for your presentation. Mayor Grimal?
Well, I probably should have mentioned, just for clarity's sake, especially for the public. I know that the council members have a packet of information, but this is for a postage machine, I believe. And so, you know, this isn't maybe the most exciting item that's going to come before city council, but it is very important in terms of the day-to-day work here at City Hall. And Ms. Martin, you did a super job and followed protocol such as it may or may not exist around here. So you did a super job.
Order in the chambers, order over Pitney Bowes. Councilman Parker has the floor.
So it's a five-year contract, correct?
Yes, correct.
And would that also include any required upgrades if needed?
Yes, they're giving us an upgraded machine. We currently have the 1500 series, and I think the series that we're getting is like a 20, I believe it's like a 2500 series, but the functionality is similar. And this is often what you find with lease renewals. They're always updating their equipment with the latest and greatest technology. So that's what we're seeing here with this renewal.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Rutherford.
First of all, I'm so happy that you're here.
I'm happy to be here.
And you did an amazing job.
Thank you.
And you look good, too.
Thank you.
My only question is, what's the timeline when this machine will be delivered?
The other party has not signed the agreement because we were waiting to bring this before council. So we only have the deputy mayor's agreement. So once the agreement is signed, it takes approximately 30 days for them to deliver the new equipment, which I believe is currently residing in the city clerk's office. So this will be postage for all city departments.
All right, thank you so much.
Councilman Goodman.
And the only question I have is, like, since we're leasing this equipment, I'm assuming that any repair costs that are incurred, are they a part of the, like, a part of the contract that they have to fix it? Or is that a cost that we would incur ourselves?
The maintenance usually is typically, typically part of the cost, but I will verify that 100% for you.
Okay, that is the only question I have.
Any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, speakers list exhausted. Roll call on adoption of the resolution. Clerk Doyle.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Seven yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. The resolution is adopted. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to approve the agreement for participation in the OCAT, or OCAT, project, and receipt of Automobile Theft Prevention Authority Grant Funds between Oakland County, meaning the Oakland County Sheriff's Office, and the city of Pontiac, specifically the Oakland County Sheriff's Office, Pontiac?
Some move.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Rutherford, seconded by Councilman Nicholson. The motion is now before us. We give the floor to the administration to queue it up and introduce any supplementary information.
Well, this is pretty straightforward, but to get into some of the finer details, I would invite our guest from the Oakland County Sheriff's Office, as well as our grants director, Alex Borngesser.
Good evening. What you have before you is an agreement for participation in OCAT and receipt of the ATPA, which is the Auto Theft Prevention Authority Funds between Oakland County, as in the Oakland County Sheriff's Office, and the city of Pontiac, otherwise known, in this instance, as Oakland County Sheriff's Office-Pontiac. This is a grant award that the city has been utilizing from the state of Michigan through the Oakland County Sheriff's Office since 2013. The agreement that is also included in the supplemental materials is to accept the ATPA grant funds for the reimbursement of half of the sheriff deputy's eligible expenditures assigned to the full-time ATPA-related activities through participation in OCAT, which is a lot of acronym, and I'm sorry. The goal is to reduce the number of motor vehicle thefts in each grant area by investigating cases that have the highest potential for reducing the demand for stolen vehicles. And I have Mr. Michael Ritchie here from the sheriff's office to discuss the details of this program and the grant award and how it's implemented.
Hi, good evening. Basically, I came unprepared where I thought I was just going to maybe answer any questions that anybody might have.
Sure, but the primary question, please give an overview of the auto theft prevention efforts that have already been underway.
Sure. So we are, we are multi-jurisdictional task force. We operate with five detectives on the north end of Oakland County, along with six detectives on the south end. Pontiac, we have designated two detectives that oversee just Pontiac alone because they take up approximately 40% of our auto theft-related cases in Oakland County.
Questions for Councilwoman Rutherford?
Not a question, just a comment. I want to commend you on what you guys do in auto theft. The reason why I'm saying this is because I know a relative of mine whose car was stolen, and he had just got his Range Rover, and they stole it. But he had, they did, and he had his automatic, well, without, without a plod, because y'all found this car within 72 hours and it wasn't stripped. And so that means a lot, when y'all can actually find it from point A to point B, and they got it back almost in one piece, but it was in one piece.
Thank you. That is their goal, for sure.
Yep, thank you.
Other discussion? Pro Tem Carrington.
Don't matter.
Just a, just a clarifying statement. So basically, this, this position is already under our current Oakland County Sheriff agreement or contract. And then this grant allows us to be reimbursed 50% of that particular position?
Yes.
All right, all right, thank you.
Councilwoman James.
Yeah, I also want to clarify, is, is this, so this is not a new grant? This is something that's been going on since 2013?
Yes, we have to renew every year. We have to reapply and renew.
Okay, so every year we are reimbursed this amount, and what we're being asked to do is just to receive it?
Yes.
Okay.
Hearing no further discussion, what's before us is approving the agreement for participation in OCAT, this project, and receipt of Automobile Theft Prevention Authority Grant Funds between the county to benefit the city. And hearing no further discussion, speakers list is exhausted. Roll call on adoption. Clerk Doyle.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Guinness.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington. Carrington.
Yes.
Seven yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. The resolution is adopted. We now are at public comment. Oh, we already did that one, since we moved the agenda. Now we're at public comment. Pro Tem Carrington.
Thank you, President McGinnis. Ms. Billy Swizer.
Good afternoon. I'm Billy Swizer, and I live at 1619 Marshbanks in Pontiac. It is east of Metal Ridge. Recently, within the last six weeks, there were two stop signs put up on Marshbank Drive. There was no notice given to anyone in the neighborhood. There was just a sign. It said, "Stop All Ways," meaning it's a three-way stop. I live on the same street as Councilwoman James. And I wonder, why would they put the signs up and not talk to, and not send notice to the neighbors to why we had the signs up? I've been visiting that neighborhood since it was established in 1998. And for the last 22 years I've lived in it, 21 years I've lived in that neighborhood, I've seen no indication that we needed a stop sign. People stop because when you come into Middle Ridge, you, you, the first street you hit is Marshbank. And Marshbank goes east and west, so you would have to stop, otherwise you might hit somebody. So I wonder, wonder why they would put that there. And if the city put it there, why wouldn't they notify the neighborhood that they were putting it there? And what was happening that caused them to have to put two stop signs there? One is under a tree, so you can hardly see it. It's got foliage right now, so you know it's there. Is it just to make money? Because I've asked all my neighbors directly surrounding me, why did we have to have a stop sign on that street? We haven't had to have it for 20, 24 years. Now why do we have to have it this year? There's other things I could see that the neighborhood would need, like somebody to slow down between, not Savannah, Savannah and Metal Ridge. But regardless of that, I just think it just was pretty, pretty poor that the city put up the stop signs, didn't bother to notify us, and then just the only thing we got is a stop sign that said, "Always Stop." It's only a three-way, and people have to slow down to turn left onto Metal Ridge, and they generally, I guess, slow down to keep going. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Renee Beckley.
I found these amounts. This is not any particular order. Mike McGinnis, city council president, $4,000. Brett Nicholson, and Mike McGinnis is from District 7. Brett Nicholson, District 2, $3,000. Catlet James, District 4, $4,000. Michael Goodman, District 4, $3,000, I'm sorry, he's from District 3, $3,000. William Carrington, District 6, $5,050. William Parker, District 5, $4,000. And Mayor Tim Grimal, $4,200. It is hard to determine what happened in Councilwoman Melanie Rutherford's campaign finance report because there are two entries that she stated she contributed $8,000 and later $3,100 to her own campaign. That is something that she and the Oakland County Clerk's Office should work out. I just read to you all the donations that came from one family, the Sirdoff family, who owns M1 Concourse. So you see where this is going. So I say this city council and the mayor is now brought to by M1 Concourse, where they park the cars in the garage. Now I believe that the mayor and the city council will bypass citizens' complaints and concerns about this noisy establishment. I believe anything M1 Concourse wants, they shall get. I thought something was wrong with this council, because there's always a unanimous yes. Nobody agrees. I don't even agree with my, well, she's dead now, but my own mother, I didn't agree with her all the time. But yes, 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 everything, y'all? Somebody got to say no sometimes. You're brought and paid by M1 Concourse. Tim Grimal's paid to lead the charge for M1. I guess if you live in Pontiac, and that total estimate up to $30,000 for everybody, because I include, I don't know what Melanie did, I don't, that's your business, but you better take care of the county. Okay, I'm just telling you, I'm just, this public knowledge, I got this from the Oakland County website on Oakland County Finance Report. Public information.
Order, it's public comment.
So to give the mayor, the council, you can't get, so if you don't have $30,000 to give this mayor and council total, you can't get anything done in Pontiac. In closing, I'd like to shout out to all future opponents for the city council and the mayor. Seven up for the city council and one new mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Deidre Waterman.
Congratulations, council, for getting the MDOT resolution for the Woodward Loop Reconfiguration. I mentioned that the MDOT project was a legacy project that I did, and some of you, some people said, well, what are, what are your legacy projects? I think there were about 10 of them. And what they were, were things that we did in the administration that were transformational developments for the city, that we got them started, and now you've inherited them, and we want to make sure that you keep advancing them. But I'm just going to mention some of the other ones, because I think they're instrumental in where we are as a city and how we've prospered and thrived to this point. Of course, one of them was that we revived the city from financial crisis to fiscal stability and left, at the end of my administration, December 31, 2021, $21 million surplus. The more surplus that you had to work with and start with since for 50 years in this country. So you got to be careful about how you spend that, council. I see you're burning through a lot of that this year. And so we don't want to burn our ways back to, you know, insolvency like we did before. So be careful of that, how you spend that. We also created a new narrative about Pontiac to win respect for our city and to achieve a destination city status. So, you know, when we came, at one time Pontiac was among the 10 most violent cities in the United States. We're no longer there. We also cleaned up a lot of our blighted neighborhoods and got rid of a lot of the blight, the structural blight, the desolate homes that we had to take down or rehabilitate, and we did that. We saved the Phoenix Center. That, when I came aboard, the emergency manager had gotten us into a big albatross in terms of the court, and we were about to lose that for $1. He was going to give away for $1. Plus, the city was going to be subject to $30 million judgment levy. So I asked the judge to please let me have a settlement. We reached a settlement, and as you know the last, we, in order to avoid a cost, the default of that settlement, we were able to get a private partners, private-public partnership. And the private-public partners are responsible, within two years, to come up with a plan so that they can fix the repairs in the garage, the $18 million. That was why we did that, and the $18 million, that plan is due January 1 of this year. So be careful that that gets carried through and that we get to use the Phoenix Center. Right now, we should have the ability to use the Phoenix Center and for parking for our events, but with the agreement I worked out. We brought nearly $1 billion in economic development to the city by attracting such industry leaders as Amazon, UnitedHealthcare Mortgage, Williams International, and ushered in the biggest building boom the city has seen, including affordable housing, in 20, since the early days of General Motors. We talked about MDOT. The other thing I was very proud of is that we opened a youth center. And that's what the people voted for, and I hope we continue that.
Also, thank you. The audience, please be respectful regardless of if you don't agree with something at public comment. Please, it's hard to, for me to hear what they're saying. Thank you. Ms. Darlene Clark.
Hello, once again, talking as a resident, this is resident, um, because I am a resident. I don't even know where to start. Let me say this, because this has been on my mind forever. Politics is the devil's playground. Lies, corruption, you name it. Last week, Mr. Goodman says that we don't know who he is, so we, we kind of thought he was talking about him. We don't have to know who you are. From District 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, and 7, it speaks for itself. There's, it's unquestionable how the people and the residents are living in each district, the conditions that they are living in too. Everything that's there, concentrating on businesses is your agenda, and that's fine and good. It's not concentrating on the residents. Ms. Waterman just sit here and says that we've number 10 in, in, as far as being crime. Pontiac is on 2, 3 lists governed by the FBI. One is covert, we on number 15 on the list as the worst people, the worst city to be in. I have the paperwork. We on, um, Rose Day, we're number 7 on there. It's being the worst city in Pontiac to live. And what, what makes Pontiac the worst city is our living conditions. It also states this, that the majority, 19.5% of the people that, that work in Pontiac have to commute, commute 20 to 30 miles outside the city limits. We're seeing that we're not hiring people in Pontiac. It's clear. These businesses promise you, "Oh, we'll hire you," but let me tell you, they will hire them for the quota and fire them just as quick as they got them. Now, let's get back to the residents, because this is what's important to me. The living conditions in the city of Pontiac is terrible. It's on the website, it's free room, look it up. Put in the worst city to live in, it'll come right up to you on the website. Also, the people that work hard for the city of Pontiac have put blood, sweat, and tears in it. The people, Pontiac is, is not a welcoming city. You want us to believe that we're friendly? Yes, we're very friendly. We, but we're tired. The people are tired because calling the city, you're gonna get an answer. Trying to talk to a council, you don't get an answer. When you, like she, like the young lady just said, it's always, since January all the way to today, it's 7 to 0 vote. Do you think the people is not taking this into consideration? Are you not considering the people? Because the people are important. You're getting ready to raise our taxes. Now, who has to pay for those taxes or we have to vacate?
Thank you. Ms. Gloria Miller.
I'm gonna take, I'm gonna take off where she left off. And I'm talking to the residents of the city of Pontiac. You know, I was on the council last time, and I spoke from the time I was on there for the four years until a day off that I'm off, and I'm probably one of the only council member ever to come back and still fight, because I know there's a lot of corruption in Pontiac. And I know the players. And I'm gonna say something. First of all, these decisions you guys make, a year from now, I know your mom would be acting, saying every one of you made is gonna be a mistake. I can't tell you how many projects I voted on as a council member, how they lied to us and said what they're gonna do. MDOT with period, they said they weren't gonna make it a bike lane, it's spoken a tipper lane. On tape, pull the tape. Lied. Everything that the old council voted down, you guys are voting up. We voted it down for a reason. You also put yourself in the lane of being the planning commissioner today. The planning turned it down. You guys went and voted for it. It's a reasoned plan they turned that down. That's something that the 10th council didn't do. We didn't play patterns. We let them do their job. It was a reason they vote that down. If you look at the council, and I'm talking to my constituents, I'm talking to the people out there in that land that know me, because I called it for the last administration. What happened? Something gone to the United States Attorney General for corruption. Now, I'm telling all my resident out there that know me, trust me, I have no bone in it, don't want no money in it. I'm looking at corruption again. I'm just gonna call it out. How do you expect a, a mayor to come into the city that doesn't live here, that doesn't even live here, to tell us so much? All I'm asking my constituents out there, pay attention. If, if MDOT gonna come into the city of Pontiac and give $30 million, and by the way, mayor, you said last week $10 million, now we gotta pay 1.2 million. Who you think that money is gonna come out of pocket? The taxpayers. That's coming out of the general budget. And then when Detroit did their remodeling of downtown Detroit, where is all the African-American people Detroit, they now pushed out. They're pushing us out, guys. They're pushing us out slowly, slowly. They're pushing us out. Now, I may get a lot of, but when anybody know me, I stand by myself, and I don't give a D what nobody say to me. I'm gonna stand for truth, I die for truth. And what I see here is the same old crap that I seen in the last administration. I see some things, people, and eventually I'm gonna start walking the street and I'm gonna talk to you. Because I'm not gonna stay here in my city watching it go down like this. Those two measures that you voted on, and, and by the way, constituents out there, pay attention. Everything come before this council is already done. It's already done. We got no votes, and that meeting, by the way, for the, uh, Dream Cruise, it was a lot of discourse for me. It was a lot of things they haven't even worked out. They don't even know how the train's gonna run and stop. We gonna be in a jam. And I'm gonna keep coming until I can't come no more and tell the truth.
Thank you. Mr. Chuck Johnson.
Thank you very much, and good evening, ladies and gentlemen, those of you here in the audience, and those of you at home watching by television. You know, I got a lot of things that I can talk about tonight, uh, but I want to step back about six or seven months, and I want to applaud the mayor and this council for doing the things that you have done to benefit the city and the citizens of Pontiac. I noticed that you have brought new people into our different departments, you're starting to revamp our parks and recreation areas, uh, you're, you're doing a lot of good things that has not been done for a long, long time. Now, I don't want to beat that down, but you all up there know what I mean. You've done a great job thus far, and I think you're gonna continue doing the good work that you're doing. I wanted to comment on a couple of other things, 13, 14, and 15, but I'm gonna wait until the administration or the council makes comment on it. But you know, a lot of folk can come to this podium and say a lot of different things. It appears to me, and I'm gonna just say this, that rhetoric and bullshit that came from the 10th council.
Order, no, no comment.
That mess that come from the 10th council is now falling over into this, don't pay it any attention. I got a folder this thick on Gloria's comments and BS from the 10th council. She don't have the people she claims that's following her. She don't have, she don't have anything that she stands up here at this microphone and submit. Trust me, she's a loser in the 10th council. She didn't get her way. She tried to run that mayor down, but she, she didn't get away with that. Uh, Mayor Waterman, uh, was in the room a minute ago, she's trying to accuse her of all kinds of accusations and missed, uh, comments. But the point is, ladies and gentlemen, those of you in this audience, and those of you at home watching by television, be mindful of the things that are talked about at this mic, because a lot of them are true and a lot of them ain't true, but the most of them is just a bunch of, well, I'll take it back. Thank you very much. I'll finish my comments another day and time. But don't believe all this crap that you're hearing. And congratulations to the whole administration and this, uh, council for the good work and the work I can see you're gonna do in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Shanaya Williams. Did I pronounce right? Okay, Shanaya Williams.
Hi, I'm Shanaya Williams, lifelong resident, fourth generation. And at the beginning of this meeting, everybody was speaking how nice people are and stuff like that. I don't think so. I think it's been some, um, very unfriendly, unbecoming things happening to me personally downtown Pontiac. Now, I addressed it. Nobody, not even my own district, reached out to me. Now, I'm a business owner too, so I know how to handle myself. Ever since that day, it's been random residents, residents coming to me and complaining about these shady landlords that y'all giving big buildings and properties to for pennies on a dollar. They taking money from Sarah and Osha and trying to put these people out. These people, it's winter time. They don't have no heat, they can't cook no food for their children, they living in mold-infested places. And all y'all can talk about is woodwork, is cleaning gutters. Like, what is really going on with you people? Like, seriously? Y'all supposed to represent us, right? Y'all supposed to speak for us, right? Like, where's the newsletters? Like, everybody don't have electronic devices to go online to view these things. Where's the announcements of all these town hall meetings? Why, why is it so hard to find this information? Now, I am well-versed on the internet and everything, but these people is feeling unsafe and unwanted here. Is that what y'all represent? Pushing the people, the generations and generations, generations of people out of this city? What, for big business? Like, they really care about us? They even don't even care about y'all. But y'all giving them, y'all giving them every piece of everything else that is, that y'all won't sell to the, to the regular people. Y'all ain't giving them no chance, but y'all gonna give these strangers chances that's actually been on the news, even though it ain't specific to company, it's the same people. The same people. Same people do the same thing over and over again, under different companies' names, and all of y'all know that. I want an open apology. I want an apology for what I went through at the Liberty Bar from Brett Nicholson. I want an apology just as loud as your disrespect was to me.
That concludes your time.
Thank you. Mr. Veronica Taylor. Pastor Veronica Taylor.
As long as I always come to this mic, I represent God. We here praying for this city on a daily basis. Are y'all hearing the people cry? Are y'all hearing the people talk about what they need? Are y'all listening to what they are saying? All of you all up here, things are going on in the community and they need help. I sat here and heard this lady, the way she talked and the passion in her heart. I know Mr. Nicholson have never done nothing to meet this, but if he did, I'm apologizing for you, me, and everybody that look like me to you. Secondly, yes, I am a pastor. I was just ordained as one, because I have hard-working mom service, I've been taking care of inmates locked up for many years. Yes, I want to see this city flourish, but I do not want to see nobody throughout their home not taken care of. I want to see the residents be able to have the things that they need. But I do want, if this good business people coming in, make sure that the Pontiac people are getting the jobs first, and they able to read, write, and comprehend, so they can get the applications that they need. And in saying that, I also want to make sure wherever these people are being pushed out their home, I'm counting on this council board and this mayor to do a good investigation on seeing what's going on in this city and hurting these people, because they are the voters, and they have that right to be able to be heard. And like I said, yes, I want to see what the building look like. Y'all put it out there, and I wanna see, because I do want inmates to come home from prison to be able to have a good job. I want the residents here in the city of Pontiac to be able to be able to have a good place to live and have a job too. So to say, I'm asking God right now to comfort some of y'all hearts and help these people so they won't be put out. And if this lady is hurt, Mr. Nicholson have never did nothing to me or anyone that I could go on his bar, but I am so deeply sorry the way you feel and you hurt. And all of us sitting in here should apologize if she feel that way. If he didn't do nothing, he need to take care of it. Just make these people feel whole again. Amen.
Thank you. That concludes, uh, public comment.
All right, we are now at discussions. The first is restoring citizen access to the Oakland County Sheriff Pontiac Substation. Mayor Grimal, would you like to update us what progress has been made?
Yeah, thank you, President McGinnis. Uh, we, uh, got, uh, a number of reports over time about the sheriff's substation being, uh, closed to visitors, and, uh, I started having a dialogue with Captain Ewing about that dynamic. Uh, it, it quickly became clear that the essential issue, uh, there, there are a couple of nuances of this, but essentially, it had been opened before COVID, and then was closed during COVID and never opened again. So I pointed out that city halls open again, schools are open again, courts are opening back up again, and that the substation needs to open up again. Uh, there is, uh, a little bit of a wrinkle, because there is some staffing challenges that the, uh, substation is facing in terms of the specific position to, uh, have a person in the substation, particularly during the midnight shift. And of course, a lot of employers, not just the sheriff's station, are, are challenged by, uh, the employment market right now. But, uh, the upshot is this, that, uh, beginning this week, the substation is going to be open seven days a week, from the hours of 7:00 AM to 11:00 PM. Uh, and again, that will be every single day, seven days a week, 7:00 AM to 11:00 PM, it will be open. And then in addition, at least two or three nights a week, it should be open 24 hours. Um, and again, the only reason that's limited to two or three nights is, uh, their effort to try to find people who are willing to work, uh, that midnight shift. Uh, the deputies who work in the sheriff's station are a specific category of deputy, uh, different from the road patrol deputies. So that is good news. Uh, I know that we've heard from a number of residents who were concerned about the lack of access to the public to get into the substation, and I'm happy to report that that's changing.
Any further discussion on the topic? I want to thank councilmember James and other citizens that raised this as an important issue, so that way it could be resolved. Councilman Goodman.
And I'm just happy to see that we are, uh, going back to what should have already been the case. And that is the point that I want to highlight especially, is that this should have already been the case. It should have been open and accessible the entire time, because if we have a, a police force that occupies our city that is not directly owned by us, uh, the very least that we can do is make sure that the citizens of Pontiac have direct access to the people who police it. Uh, so I'm happy that we are, again, reaching the bare minimum that we should have been at in the first place. But I really appreciate the work from the administration and from my colleagues in doing so.
Any further discussion?
Uh, yeah.
Councilman Rutherford.
This is awesome, because this gives people opportunity to have more face-to-face, and it takes away that stupid box that's outside. So I am excited, I can't wait till it opens up, and I appreciate you for doing this, sir.
Mayor Grimal.
Yeah, I should also add that because the deputy who's inside the police station is a different category, um, that individual will likely not be able to take police reports. However, people can sit inside the police station and wait for a road patrol deputy to arrive in order to take, uh, a report down. So I, I want to just measure that expectation.
So I, I wanna just measure that expectation that people may still have to wait for a road patrol deputy to take the report, but at least they'll be able to wait inside rather than in their car or in inclement weather.
Any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, we move to the next discussion item, Purdue School Status, Recent Fire and Next Steps. Uh, we, the city council, uh, had received information about the incident that took place. Uh, the school is owned by the taxpayers of Pontiac, but has been vacant for a number of years. And so the fire department informs us that it is arson and it was an isolated fire. They were to swiftly address it. Um, but we wanna hear from the administration and staff about making sure that it's as secure as possible, that the perimeter is, is, um, upkept, and then in terms of what you know in terms of next steps for what can resolve this ISO so that way the neighborhoods that are near it, um, that the people of Pontiac aren't the ones leaving this ISO there.
Yeah.
Mayor Grimal.
Well, thank you, President McGinnis. And I, I know that this is a particular concern to you because it's in your district, but it's a concern to all of us and it's something that my administration takes very seriously. We, we knew it was a blighted property. We knew it was an ISO, uh, and we knew at least there was the potential for some safety risks there. But this fire has amplified and magnified all of those concerns, particularly the safety concerns. Um, and, you know, just so the, the public has a sense of the history here, when the previous administration and previous council entered into the, I'll call it convoluted deal around the Phoenix Center that involved buying the office towers from a private owner, selling them to a new private owner at a loss, and leasing the Phoenix Center parking decks for 100 years. Uh, one of the provisions in that deal was that the city took on ownership of Purdue School. And so, uh, it's obviously, it's not an asset, it's a liability really because there's considerable expense to demolishing this derelict building and trying to safeguard against it. And so that was, you know, another negative side to the deal is that the city was obligated to take ownership of this liability that is the old Purdue School. And so, um, it is something we take seriously. Um, we have accelerated our efforts to look at longer-term options in terms of either demolition or potentially some approach to redevelopment. We have been very reluctant to provide any tax incentives to landlords and have not done so since all of us took office in January. Um, and I, I reflect on that because I know we've, we've heard some speakers suggest that we're giving things away to landlords. We actually have not, at least the eight of us, given away anything to landlords, uh, since all of us took office in January. And in fact, it's our reluctance to do that that has, um, potentially, you know, delayed or created some challenges in terms of a developer taking over this site. Uh, but in the short term, we understand, and this fire, um, really amplifies the urgency here to properly secure the site and to address some of the blight there in terms of the, the shrubs and the exterior problems with the site. And I know that DPW's been working on this and I want to invite Mr. Cooley to get into all of the details around, uh, his efforts.
Yes, good evening. On, on the night of the fire, there was, um, several open access areas, uh, that, that had been breached within the building. Uh, previous to, the doors and the lower windows were screwed closed and boarded up. Um, after they had gained access and the fire happened, uh, we worked with the fire department with a company that they've used previously called Belfour. They come in and, and, um, got the doors closed back, screwed back together, got the, the lower level windows closed off, but there's still some broken windows and some open, uh, doorways on the second and the third floor. Um, we're actively getting quotes on getting that entire building boarded up, uh, try to make it more safe and try to make it so that people cannot gain access and get in there. Uh, it's a, it's a dangerous building, so people shouldn't be in there in the first place. Um, we're also taking into account a couple of the fire chief's recommendations on, uh, if something like this does happen again, they were concerned that the elevator shaft is open. Uh, so we're actively looking for, um, a person, a quote from a company that could come in, board that whole building up, and also gate off those elevator shafts. So if something does happen and the fire department needs to gain entry, uh, they don't have to concern themselves with falling in that elevator shaft because it's open. Uh, we'll have gating across those. Um, I did just get a ballpark number from the company and it was, it was right in the $8,000 or $9,000 range uh, to, to be able to board that building up and make it safe and take care of those shafts. Um, you know, obviously, we need to get three quotes so that we can find the best deal of getting this type of work done. And we're actively finding those right now, uh, with three different companies that would do that work. Uh, we also, um, it was on our list to do some of that shrub removal around that was overhanging in the sidewalks. Uh, but we've accelerated that up our list to, um, try to get that shrubbery now trimmed up higher so you can see the school from the, from the, uh, the different areas of the streets so that you can tell that if people are actively trying to break in and enter with that building or do any type of work, you know, any type of damage to the, to the boarding that we'll be doing there.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the topic? Pro Tem Carrington.
Yes, I'm, I'm definitely concerned with that particular school, but I'm also concerned with every other school in the district. And I want to make sure code enforcement actually look at these buildings and make sure they're safe because, you know, uh, citizens are living by schools that need to be boarded up, uh, as well as looked into. So, uh, I'm definitely glad that administration is going this way with this particular building. But throughout the district, throughout our district, we've got several schools that are in disarray and, and need to have some attention to when it comes to code enforcement.
And, and I, I will speak with my counterpart, uh, in the code enforcement department to work with them as well so that they could get that done.
Councilwoman Rutherford.
So, uh, my issues, uh, I understand about Purdue. Purdue is a high priority, but I cannot say any further that I need y'all to go over there and check out Jefferson. I, I, I don't know what else y'all want to happen. Someone's gonna get hurt there. Um, I've been nice about it. I've been calm. I've wrote emails. I wrote texts. Y'all not taking this seriously. And because of the way that it's positioned and there's no light back there, someone can be in danger and the filth that's behind it. And I'm sure the owner's gonna call the mayor and try to get the mayor to get me off his back. But I'm frustrated because I keep telling you, Mr. Cooley, every time about Jefferson. And it's not safe. And they don't have any permits pulled, and yet they're continuing to do what they want to do. So my point is, what y'all gonna do about it?
Mayor Grimal.
Well, I, I just. I, I, we, we need to be fair here because Jefferson is a real problem. It's not DPW's problem. It's not Mr. Cooley's problem, just to be clear. Um, it's a privately-owned building, just like all the other schools other than Purdue.
Got it.
And the reason why Mr. Cooley and the DPW are involved with Purdue is that it's a city-owned property pursuant to this convoluted Phoenix Center deal that was put in place in 2020. So I, I realize that Mr. Cooley happens to be standing at the microphone, but I just want to be clear that all the other schools are a code enforcement or building department issue, not a DPW issue.
Does he know?
And in terms of Jefferson in particular, as you know, we have sent building officials out there. We have sent code enforcement out there. We will follow up with them if there are still outstanding issues. Um, but I was not aware that there were still outstanding issues there. So we'll, we'll certainly follow up with code enforcement and the building department.
Thank you.
Other discussion on this topic? We look forward to, yes.
Just one comment. You were about to ask, code enforcement is not under DPW. Um, that, that is under economic development.
So Rachel.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion on this item? We look forward to, um, progress being made in securing and mitigating essentially the, the city property there. We move to the final discussion item, Facilities Condition Assessment for City-Owned Facilities. Um, Councilwoman James had enquired to see that this be a discussion item. And it's related, uh, more broadly to what we were just talking about. And it's come up in Facilities and Property Subcommittee a few times where it's actively being tracked. Uh, but in the budget this year, the council put a placeholder amount to ensure that we could have a thorough assessment of all the properties, large and small, all the facilities, um, that the city of Pontiac has taxpayers own. So Mayor Grimal, you want to speak to that?
Well, yes, thank you, Mr. President. I, I wanna invite.
A personal privilege. I'm sorry.
I want to invite.
Director Cooley, can you shut the door, please?
Mr. Cooley? Uh, I want to invite Deputy Mayor Stevens and, and you, Mr. Cooley, to speak to the facilities assessment. And I know you were servicing a resident out in the hallway, but, uh, council was having a hard time, uh, hearing with, with the noise from the hallway. So I don't know, Deputy Mayor, if you want to introduce the topic and then turn it over to Mr. Cooley for a follow-up?
So, um, I, I will actually give it to him. He has all of the details and if there's anything that is missed, I will chime in.
So, uh, based off of what the council requested on doing a facilities assessment on the city-owned buildings, uh, I, I went back to.
Point of personal privilege. Director Cooley, I'm not sure if there are other resources in the building. I'm being told that there's a toilet that's overflowing, flooding the, the, the outside hallway. The, okay.
In the women's or men's?
Women's bathroom.
Uh, I, I don't believe there's anybody here, so I would need to walk away.
Yeah, well.
Yes.
What, what is your preference? Uh, why, why don't you step away and address that problem and then Deputy Mayor Stevens will, will take over?
Okay. So, um, one of the things that, uh, Director Cooley was, was about to say is, uh, earlier in the year, the council did ask that we do a robust study of all of the facilities that the city owns. We do have existing studies that, um, we are currently in the process of updating right now. Those of you on city council may have happened to have been in the building yesterday when representatives from Hubbell, Roth &amp; Clark were doing their walkthrough of this building and taking note of all of the different things in the building that needed to be updated. Uh, additionally, we have already been doing work at the, um, fire station number one that we, that the city technically owns. And we do have some assessments for, ah, Mr. Cooley is back. We do have some assessments for, um, uh, pavement work that needs to be done on city-owned properties as well. I was just telling them that Hubbell, Roth &amp; Clark has been here and they were updating the existing studies that we had, but you can take over.
Correct. So there was an existing study that was done. I believe it was in 2017. Uh, Hubbell, Roth &amp; Clark were back in the building today. They walked through with our, uh, building superintendent to look at all the items that they had listed previously to see any work that had been done between 17 and today's current date. So they actively went through the, a walkthrough of the whole building. Uh, and we're anticipating to see a report back from them within the next, uh, probably two to four weeks with updated numbers for, uh, you know, $20, $22 on what the, what the cost is to, to bring the building up to, to code, not the code to specs is, uh, all the items that the assessment had in it. Uh, from that process, we'll be able to do it then through the other buildings that we own. It'll give us an idea of what the costs were to, to do the assessment and then, uh, a process of on how we're doing it.
Further discussion?
Well, let me.
Councilwoman James.
Let me just say that, you know, my concern is that from the time that we did our budget, the May-June timeframe, and the, our fiscal budgets run from, is it June 1 to June 1 or July?
July 1st to June 30.
Yeah, July 1st to, to June 30th. Uh, and we're already here almost at the Christmas timeframe. We need to understand what is, you, because we've got aging buildings, we've got aging infrastructure. And, and every budget year, we ought to be getting something accomplished. So I, you know, I'm, I'm concerned about the assessment for the, from the standpoint that we're looking at our budget year and what we talked about getting accomplished in this budget year. And I'm kind of, you know, as a year is moving to a close, I'm kind of getting concerned, are we really serious about making this assessment, determining what we can get done within this budget year so that when this council comes together for the next budget year, we can look at and examine what we've accomplished and what the next steps need to be? So just, I'm just bringing it up because of that reason, that we, we want to stay in touch with the timing.
Deputy Mayor.
No, it's a very good point, Councilwoman. And I can assure you that, um, we will have, before the close of this year, not only the assessment that you have requested, we will be able to, um, tell you before we go into the next budget cycle, what it is that we are planning to do on the existing buildings and what our, um, proposals are for any long-term. So there, there are short-term changes that need to be made. So for example, we've already talked about the sidewalk in front of the sheriff's substation. We've already talked about the, um, the underground storage tank, um, for, for gasoline that, that needs to be, um, maintained. So we already know about those things, but we'll be able to tell you about all of those types of things, um, other little changes that need to be made in and around this building and other buildings. But additionally, we will be able to tell you what our long-range, um, plans and suggestions are for modernizing the city and being able to increase service delivery. Um, the unfortunate reality of the situation right now is that, um, one of the things that Director Cooley is grappling with is not, um, is not unique to him, is not unique to the city, but it, it is just the real reality of, we have, this administration, um, and I'm talking about all of us jointly, has made a decision that we are going to lean into the idea that we want to increase service delivery in the city. And that means that we need to hire up. And that hiring up process has not been an easy one, but it has been one that we have been doing deliberately and wholeheartedly and full-throatedly. One of the, um, things that, that requires, as we hire up, is to actually find places in the building to put people. So we've actually taken a lot of resources that may have otherwise been devoted to general, um, the general study that you've asked for, and actually put those resources into reclaiming spaces in the building. But I, I assure you that we have heard you, we, and we are, we are going to have what you have asked for before we enter the next budget cycle.
Any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, we move now to city council communications. Pontiac City Council has recognized September 2022 as Suicide Prevention Month. Similarly, it's voted to recognize this month as Sickle Cell Awareness Month. The Oakland County Treasurer's Virtual Land Auction, the second round, is September 28th. Visit tax-sale.info, which is their website, for more information. The Clinton River Trail Resurfacing Project Ribbon Cutting is Friday, September 30th, 1:30 p.m. on the trail at the bridge just west of Bagley Street. CVS Pharmacy in St. Paul, Pontiac, um, they have their annual flu vaccine clinic October 5th from 1:00 to 6:00 p.m. and that's at St. Paul 1133 Jocelyn Avenue. Impact of Ad-First Childhood Experiences or ACEs Training, October 7th from 9:00 a.m. to 3:30 p.m. held at UWM 585 or United Wholesale Mortgage 585 South Boulevard East in Pontiac. Uh, visit oaklandchn.org/activities to register online and for more information. Uh, the Pontiac Creative Arts Center on October 7th has a deep meditation and art therapy session from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. and there at 47 Williams Street. The Pontiac Car Show and Woodward Scream Cruise is October 8th from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m. at the Oakland History Center, 405 Caesar Chavez. Pontiac Night Riders has a motorcycle, um, their motorcycle club has a free annual senior citizen dinner, October 8th from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. there at 339 Rayburn in Pontiac. Mica 6 Community has their Death by Chocolate fundraiser at Goldner Walsh on October 21st from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. And then on October 28th, the Oakland County Treasurer has their final round of that land auction. And that's also online at that same tax-sale.info website. Mayor's office, your communications.
Thank you, President McGinnis. Uh, a few, uh, items. Uh, number one, I want to, again, encourage residents who have young people in their families or know neighbors who have young people or friends with young people to, uh, register our city's youth for youth recreation and enrichment programming. We've got really amazing programs this. We've got really amazing programs this fall. Folks can register online at pontiacrecreation.reckdesk. That's R-E-C-desk.com. Secondly, we have the State of the City Address coming up this Thursday, September 29, at 6 o'clock p.m. at the Crowfoot. Although the capacity of the Crowfoot is 320 people, it booked up in very short order, in less than a week.
Mayor Primal has the floor.
In less than a week, registration was full, which is a great problem to have, but it means that there's no more opportunity to register. We will have an overflow room at the Crowfoot if people are interested in attending in a joining room and watching it on TV. There will be an opportunity to do that. And of course, there will be an opportunity to watch it livestreamed and also on cable, including on tape after the event concludes. So please tune in or come in person and participate in the overflow room. And lastly, we have the last in my series of brunch and community conversations with the mayor coming up on Saturday, October 8, from 11 a.m. to 1 p.m. at the Bowen Center. So we encourage folks to come out. This is an opportunity to have an informal dialogue and question-and-answer session with me. And we also provide a pretty robust brunch as well, so it's a good opportunity for free food, if nothing else. So we hope to see folks there, October 8, 11 a.m. at the Bowen Center.
With that, Mayor Grammer, your closing comments.
Well, thank you, President McGinnis. Rather than trying to address every item of misinformation that was shared by certain members of the public tonight, which I'm afraid would take more time than I'm allowed, I do want to just address one particular item of confusion that was expressed, and that is the question of the cost of the Martin Luther King Bridge versus the cost of the Woodward Loop. The total estimated cost for the Martin Luther King Bridge repair is $10 million. That's the $10 million figure. Assuming that we qualify for emergency bridge funds from the state, and we should have a definitive answer on that this November, the state should be picking up about 95% of the construction cost for that project, meaning about $9.5 million. The city would still be responsible for $500,000 of the construction cost plus all of the design and engineering expense. The Woodward Loop project, as we discussed tonight, is estimated to have a total cost of $30 million. And about $28.8 million of that will be footed by MDOT with the city responsible for the remaining $1.2 million of that project. I do just want to remark that it's really amazing to me that there seem to be a handful of people who really don't want the mayor and city council to get along or to work together. You know, we've just suffered through many, many years of discord here at City Hall. And I think it's a really great thing that we have a collaborative relationship, that we work well together. The vast majority of residents that I talk with are truly relieved that we finally have a functional city government, and it's something that I'm really proud of, and I think the vast majority of residents in our city are really proud of. And lastly, I just want to mention that, as we've discussed in the past, DTE is doing a lot of electrical grid upgrades in the city, and that will continue for the next several years. And as part of that, they are instituting some planned outage periods so that they can safely do work without endangering their workers. And one of those is coming up this coming Tuesday on October 4. And so I want to use this opportunity to get that information out to the public. We'll also be putting it on the city's website and using other means to get information out. But on Tuesday, October 4, from 10 a.m. to noon during that two-hour period, there will be a two-hour power outage here in the city of Pontiac. So please plan accordingly. I know that these power outages are not fun. They're very inconvenient. But they are necessary in order to upgrade our electrical grid so that we don't have the number and severity of power outages that we've had in recent decades. So thank you for your patience as DTE continues to make these important investments in our electrical grid.
And you said again, 10 a.m. to noon on Tuesday, October 4?
That's right.
All right. Clerk Doyle, your closing comments.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to remind the residents, Election Day is six weeks away from today, November 8. Beginning this Thursday, September 29, is the first day that we can legally start to mail absentee ballots. So be on the lookout for your absentee ballot if you've already completed an absentee application. Also, starting on Thursday, you can begin to vote in person in the clerk's office if you choose to. The clerk's office is open Monday through Friday, 8:30 a.m. until 4:30 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you, Clerk Doyle. We move now to Councilman Melanie Rutherford, District 1, your closing comments.
You chose the right picture for the right moment. Good evening, everyone. Slow down. I was told I talk too fast, and I want to read this accurately because I like to state facts. "The greatness of a community is more accurately measured by the compassionate actions of its members." That was said by the late, great Coretta Scott King. "Are you showing compassion when you try to insinuate a lie?" Well, I want to answer some questions that were said tonight. My treasurer for my campaign name is Michael Kopelik. And if you read the reports, you will see where I show where all of my money came from, from me. Because if you didn't know, I'm a successful, I mean, I get paid singer-songwriter. And every quarter, I get a publishing check and a writing check and a performance check, and can show the receipts if asked. So I donated to myself because long before anybody believed in Melanie Rutherford, Melanie Rutherford believed in Melanie Rutherford. So I put my money where my mouth is. I dress the part because I am also a person that before I got into politics, I was an entertainer. So how you look is a reflection of who you are. And lastly, I didn't take a dime from N1. My opponent did, and you can look at her records, too. Melanie Cherie Rutherford didn't get a dollar from N1. Melanie Cherie Rutherford, an American attestant, is actively asking N1 to put their money where their mouth is by helping them actually ask for $250,000, Ms. Beckley, to repair Art Dunlap. The reason why I'm saying this, and I will never address this person again, is you will not keep coming up here trying to bully somebody who is not bullying you. You don't like me, Cooley. You have called me a home wrecker. You have talked about my kid. You have done everything you could do because I don't care what anyone- it's my moment. I'm gonna say what I want. You can do whatever, but at the end of the day, I'm doing my job, hate it or love it. The underdog's on top of it. Now, want to talk about my new offices for the District 1 meeting that we have on Saturday. My new president for the District 1 group, her name is Claudia Buckley. She's the president. The vice president is Darwin Vincent. He's a successful principal and a dean located in Detroit, born and raising the projects on the South Side. That's the vice president. My treasurer is Mr. Knight. Wave your hand, boo-boo. And also, I'm sorry, secretary, and my treasurer is Ms. Sonya May because she keeps the books. I like to announce my offices because our last week, we had 25 people come in and out of our meeting. That is the highest number I've had. I like to discuss that because we are a community group that are doing the work. So much that I want to thank special shots out for Ernestine McCall, Yana Shepherd, and Winfrey Gordon, who delivered the 83 line signs in District 1 because I had prior engagement. It takes a community to do community service. I also want to lastly say this. I'll wait. It's okay. I experienced such a level of love tonight because my new community group for District 1, whose next meeting is October 29 at the Alley Cat, from 11 to 1, they all showed up, half of them. And they did that because we are trying to show and lead by example. We're not leading by emotions. We don't always get along. In fact, we have heated debates, but at the end of the day, that group is trying to push District 1 forward. And lastly, please write this date down, October 30. I am sponsoring with people who like me, a District 1 Halloween event. It's gonna be at Sonya May House on 426 Alton. We gonna have food and prizes. And most importantly, we gonna service the district that I represent until 2026, District 1. And on that note, I say, good night.
Councilman Nicholson, District 2.
I want to start tonight by offering, I do want to apologize to Ms. Shawnee Thea Williams. I want to apologize because clearly we all felt the hurt that was in her heart and in her voice tonight. And I have lived with that for three weeks since our interchange and our conversation. My tone was sharp, and it was heated. It was a 50-second interchange that if I could take back, I would. I need to be more thoughtful and more patient. I am a small business owner. She is a small business owner. We both live in Pontiac. We're both LGBT, right? There are more people, there are people out there that hate both of us. There's no reason for us to hate each other. So, Ms. Williams, I am very sorry, and I vow to do better with my attitude and my patience going forward. Want to thank everybody that came out to the District 2 meeting yesterday at Goldner Walsh. It was a great opportunity to reconnect with everybody. We, you know, our group is a little bit smaller, so we only had about 40 people at that meeting. But it was good. It was good. And people came with great questions, was able to, you know, wrap up that meeting and get back to the administration and get those questions answered very quickly. So thank you to the administration for responding so swiftly. We have had, you know, the same level of response and activeness as we have since the beginning, and it's only getting better. I'm excited to come from along the Court Subcommittee meeting. That was really a great opportunity to connect with both code enforcement, the purchasing department, the 50th District Court. And we got some great news from the code enforcement department that a very large amount of those new code enforcement officers have been hired and are in training right now. So we're going to see them hitting the streets, and you're going to see a lot of action on that front. So connect with your councilperson, connect with the code enforcement department here in the next few weeks because all of those needs should be able to be addressed in ways that they haven't been before. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kathleen James, District 4.
Okay. First of all, I want to start out with addressing one of the issues that came up in public comment, and that was the stop signs in the subdivision, Parkside Preserve subdivision. Those stop signs were put in at the request of the residential group there. We had a meeting with them. They requested stop signs, and they requested no parking signs in that subdivision. We had several meetings with the homeowners group as well as with the management group for that subdivision. And those stop signs were approved by both of those groups. I agree with you that notifications should have gone out to all the residents. I was concerned about that as well. I did address that with the management group as to why we did not, because I think the approvals for both those signs was given in February. And so there was plenty of time that something could have been sent out to the residents. So I apologize for that, even though I don't think it was a city's responsibility to do that. I think that was a responsibility of the homeowners association or the management group that was fully aware that those signs were going in. So again, I apologize for that, but that's how that took place. Also, our district council meeting is this Wednesday at 6 p.m. It's going to be a Zoom meeting. If you would like to participate, please give me a call, and I'll send you a Zoom link, 248-425-4663. We are also getting out the Pride and Beautification signs. That is going very well. People are loving them, and so I'm just proud to see that kind of just real interest in the community. And people really, you really see, you know, in delivering those signs, how much people care about their property and how much they care about taking care of their property. So I really have enjoyed delivering those signs and letting people know that, you know, their neighbors have actually nominated them for that award. Oh, we want to see if there's anything. No, I think that's it. That's it. Thank you.
Councilman William Parker Jr., District 5.
Oh, okay. And with that, my thank you, brother president. And with that picture in mind, I want to thank everyone who attended the Oakland County Prosecutor's Office Resource Fair this Saturday. That's a picture of me and who was there with us. It was sort of a small turnout, but it was certainly well-done. It was well-attended. I think it did a lot of good for some of the people. It certainly gave a lot of our kids some resources for their schools. So I want to thank everybody who attended. I want to also make sure that everybody's aware that the Oakland County Prosecutor's Office and the Committee for Racial Justice will be doing another expungement event in April of 2023, and more information will be to follow. I want to thank the mayor, the deputy mayor, the DPW Department, the Code Enforcement Department for all they have done in District 5, whether that be lights, patching, painting, cutting grass, whatever, to try to improve the District 5 area in its entirety. We know that it has been taken a long, sometimes a long period of time to do, and yet you have managed to get it done, and for that, I say thank you. I did investigate in coordination with the DPW and Code Enforcement Department the issue concerning the back lot of Coon Street. What I could find out is to their knowledge, there is no request for any permits or anything to be doing anywhere back there. However, it's owned by LLC, and certainly we can't stop what I would call the neomile expenditure of their time and resources trying to figure out what they want to do with their property, because it is their property. And so right now, there is nothing that the city is aware of being planned back there, at least what I'm being told. But we will keep you updated if anything happens. I want to thank Sister Desro for coming and praying with us this afternoon. As always, she did a marvelous job. I want to thank those who've been helping me hand out our signs, and hopefully the weather will get improved. We can get a whole lot more out of them because it seems like every time I go putting out signs, it rains. And so I want to thank Ms. McClellan, Ms. McClellan, and Sister Payne for coming and assisting us with putting out some signs. And if anybody else want to help, we're going to be out tomorrow afternoon. Tell me where you'll be. We'll probably be over in Harrington Hill and Galloway Park, Galloway Lake Estates, if you want to help us put out some signs. We'll be starting at 1 o'clock. And finally, we had a meeting yesterday, actually, no, Monday, actually, regarding trying to add some additional teeth to our Black Kurt process so that everybody who's seen to be getting away won't be getting away with some of the stuff they're getting away with. More information to follow on that. And finally, I just want to say thank you to this great body and the people of Pontiac for putting up with us every Tuesday night. I know you get tired sometimes of listening to all the rhetoric that goes forth, because we all do. But we know for a fact the city is moving forward. The city is making progress, and the city is improving. Things take time. You can't eat an elephant all in one bite. You got to eat them one bite at a time. This elephant was big before we got here, and we've been nibbling at him every week, every day. It gets a little bit smaller, and it gets a little smaller, and yet there's still a whole lot of elephant left. And if anybody else want to help us chew him up, we certainly will welcome your help as long as you come with positive and not negative. Amen? And so with that, I say, good evening, Pontiac. Have a great day.
Pro-Ten William A. Carrington, District 6, your closing comments.
Thank you, President McGinnis. I just want to say good evening to the city of Pontiac as residents. Yeah, you put Councilman Rutherford in every picture, but-
That just means she gets-
Order, order.
This weekend was spent placing almost 300 Pontiac beautification signs on residents' yards in the 6th District. I'd like to thank Charity Murph, Iola Adams, Angela Cohen, and Charles Hopkins for systeming throughout the process from nominations to delivering signs. It was great to actually hit every street in the 6th District and meeting with residents as one-on-one. The outcome of this was very, very successful by the residents. And I'm glad I took others with me. So just want to be, Councilman Carrington said it was great in 6th District. I actually got other 6th District residents that was with me to see exactly the outpouring and appreciation of something that was started before us, but we done a great job in making sure that we continue that process. The day is a beautiful day. On September 27, 1950, Gwendolyn Elizabeth Brooks became the first African-American- Gwendolyn Elizabeth Brooks became the first African-American to receive the Pulitzer Prize. She was awarded the Pulitzer Prize for her second book of poetry called Annie Allen. But a quote, when I, that I looked online, and I found this quote that, that really, really radiates with me and, and how us as residents and how us as council and the mayor should be collectively working together to move this district forward. She states, "We are each other's harvest, we are each other's business, we are each other's magnitude and bond." So without that, we cannot move this great city forward. And, and ending with that, good night, the city of Pontiac.
I was about to really rip a new one of our former mayor for what she said tonight about excessive spending, but that was such a magnanimous quote that you offered, Pro Tem Carrington, I feel really guilty about what needs to be said, actually. She stated that this council and this city is burning through taxpayer dollars. And I just want to state unequivocally the hubris and gall for somebody who has done such wasteful, excessive, and unauthorized spending to, to call and cast aspersions about legitimate, authorized, and focused on residents. If you spend nothing or limited amounts of public dollars and the people suffer and the neighborhoods are in ruins, to what ends is that surplus? This is about investing in our residents. So I will make zero apologies and will always defend the votes that this council took, thoroughly reviewing and deliberating so that way it was as strategic as possible. But you're right, for the first time in years, we are going to be able to have a Parks and Recreation Department. And guess what? That's going to cost a few dollars. We now have a Parks and Recreation Director for the first time in nearly a generation. We have staff that are going to dedicate themselves to improving and caring for our parks. We have code enforcement officers, not a few, but a lot. And you know what? It's all right that that's going to cost some dollars because it's about directly improving the quality of life for all 61,000 of us, and we will each year be very shrewd and prudent where we have to recalibrate. We might have to make some, you know, tighten the belt, cost-cutting measures as the years go on when we see what the revenues are going. And we always want to have a rainy day fund, we always want to have a healthy fund balance. But for the previous executive of our municipal government to celebrate and champion the dysfunction that she presided over and then left millions of dollars unspent because they were not, she was not able to effectively govern and get approval and then actually hire people and then actually order things and put things in the neighborhoods, I do not consider that something worth celebrating. I'm grateful that that money wasn't flushed, sure, and I'm really grateful that the previous city council, especially my predecessor, Kermit Williams in District 7, said, "We will not allow that mayor to tap into any of the American Rescue Plan funds because she has zero credibility and has zero track record that can be trusted." And so it's an unpleasant fact, but I don't want this rewriting of history to say that everything was sunshine and lollipops when it came to the, the piggy bank of the taxpayers of Pontiac, and now all of a sudden, things are out of control. Ladies and gentlemen, it's extremely transparent, and each year, we are going to be, it'll be almost infuriating how drawn out it gets when we have all those hearings and all that debate, amendment by amendment. But it's your money, it's our money, these are taxpayer dollars that we have to be stewards of, and together as a community, let's make hard choices each budget cycle. But we got to do big things, we got to take care of these deferred items that were ignored or that, you know, previous dysfunction didn't allow to get addressed, because we all suffer if they go ignored. And so I just want to put that out there, please do not buy this BS, pardon me, but don't buy this line about how suddenly your city government is just spending wantonly. It is thorough and public and, and it actually will be forensically audited, as we, the city council did. It'll be audited annually in a more aggressive way, and we'll make those decisions with your input, with your, you know, feel free to give us the heat, but we are going to have to make those decisions each year, because to have a 21-square-mile city with 61,000 people and 200-plus-year-old infrastructure, there are some expensive things, and we won't be able to afford everything every year, so we'll always have to make hard decisions. But we will make smart decisions with your help for advancing Pontiac. And so I don't remember if I had any other announcements to say, I was totally taken back by that statement. And truly, you had such a positive quote, I'm really sorry that I had to give that. Oh, oh. Yes, Deputy Mayor?
Just before we close, I wanted to make sure, I, I know we are a day late, but that's because the holiday has already passed, but I do want to make sure that...
Shana Tova to all of our Jewish residents.
Thank you.
So then, bookended by very nice, very positive things, Happy New Year to those of the Jewish faith, but we will always defend the record and always make improvements because with a budget this big and an operation with this many human beings, there will always be room for improvement. But thank you to the city council for the strong decisions you've made for our taxpayer dollars. Is there a motion to adjourn?
It's moved. Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Rutherford, seconded by Councilman Nicholson, that we adjourn this evening's meeting. Hearing no debate, we'll see you if you registered at the State of the City Address for Mayor Grimal. Roll call on adjournment, Clerk Doyle.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes!
Carrington?
Yes.
Six days, no names.
Turn your mic off!
The motion carries.
Hey, bruh.
We are adjourned at 10:13.
I started to say no, just because we didn't end up at 7:00 all the time.